All right, let's go, Andy. Do we have members of the public, by the way?
Yep, we are all set.
Okay.
Looks like we have a few folks populating our meeting. Okay, Bonnie, did you want to give an introduction, or did you want me to?
You give an introduction, I'll follow up and then open the meeting.
Okay, so my name is Andy Port, I'm the Director of Planning and Development for the city. We are hosting tonight's meeting via Zoom because of the unusual circumstances with COVID-19. We're using Zoom's raise hand feature as a means to let the board members know if anybody who's here from the public wants to speak, that'll let us know that you're interested in speaking, and then at the appropriate times during the meeting, we can allow you to speak. So that goes for the applicants as well, we'll recognize you at those times. With that, we're going to run our meeting as a typical planning board meeting and follow the agenda, which I'll pull up in just a moment.
So Andy, may I take over?
Please, thank you.
Okay, this is Bonnie Sontag, Chair of the Planning Board. And before I open the meeting, I'd just like to welcome members of the public and to let you know that all the agenda items are linked to supporting materials. And as Andy just said, he's going to pull up documents as we need them, starting with the agenda. But if you go to the city website and look under Government and click on Planning Board, you'll see a link to our agenda for tonight. And at that point, you can click on that link, and it'll take you to all of the applications we're hearing tonight, and you can pull up any other materials that you might like to follow along with. So with that said, I will officially open the meeting. And because we're on a remote meeting format, I need to... Excuse me, Andy, Alden hasn't seen your new email message.
I'm not sure why, but if you tell him to join the link on the city calendar, I can promote him when he joins.
Join. Excuse me, everybody. Okay, sorry, we have a new member who's not familiar with the routine, and so we're trying to get him on the call. As I was saying, because we have a remote meeting format, we are required to call roll at the very beginning and ascertain who the members are who are here. So let me do that first. Alden Clark is attempting to get in. Beth Delisle?
I'm here.
Anne Gardner?
Here.
Tanya Hartford? Leah McGovern? Rick Tinker?
Here.
MJ Verity?
Here.
Don Walters?
Here.
And I'm Bonnie Sontag, I'm here. So we are officially listed for the online meeting. I will now go through the agenda for tonight. We will start with a joint public hearing with the Planning and Development Committee and Committee of the Whole from the City Council, and they will open their meeting at that time. And there are two agenda items there: short-term rental units and fences and site walls in downtown overlay district. Once we've completed those two hearings or related business, we will close that, they will close their meeting and remove themselves, and we will continue with our public hearings. The first one is a continued public hearing on 342 Merrimack Street for a 6C special permit. And then a major site plan review for 17 Malcolm Holt Road, and another major site plan review at 3 Stanley Tucker Drive. Both of those are linked, and that's all for the public hearing. After that, we have an approval not required for 81012 and 18 Colby Farm Lane. We have to approve our minutes of our previous meeting. There are some potential zoning amendments that we're going to review. One in particular is 6C, Section 6C. And then there'll be other updates from the Chair of the Planning Director. That's the agenda. Before I open the joint public hearing, I'm going to open the joint public hearing for the Planning Board, and I turn it over to Counselor Shand to open her meeting and join that public hearing.
All right, this is Heather Shand, Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, along with Counselor McCauley and Counselor Wallace. We make up the Committee of Planning and Development. And I call this meeting Public Hearing Open.
Do you want to introduce each of these, or at least speak to them and have the sponsors follow up?
This is Andy, I think we have Counselor Agaman here who may want to speak briefly to the downtown amendment. The short-term rental units, I assume Counselor McCauley might speak to.
Okay. So Counselor Shand, you want to get us started with the issues around short-term rental units? And what we want to do about that?
Certainly, I believe you want to continue it to a specific date. I believe Counselor McCauley has that date.
I believe it is August 19.
Yeah, motion to continue short-term rentals, August 19.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Planning Board members, may I have a motion similarly?
So move to August 19.
Second, please, that was Don, second?
Second, Anne.
Okay, Anne, second. Any discussion? All right, I need to do a roll call. And I'll see if any of the other members have joined, so I'll just go through the list. Alden Clark?
Here.
Is he here?
He is. I am here.
Okay, we're voting on continuing the short-term rental amendment, and you're eligible to vote. How do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Thank you. Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Anne Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford? Not here yet.
Tanya's just joined us.
Yes.
Thank you for your yes vote on continuing.
Yes.
Short-term rental.
Yes.
Leah McGovern?
She's actually, she's looking for the link, I'll let her know.
Okay, so she's not voting. Rick Tinker?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that will be continued to August 19. Heather, you want to take over again?
Sure. So the next item on the agenda is the ordinance 051. It's the downtown overlay district fences and site walls. And the sponsor is actually in the Zoom meeting, and I would say that Counselor Agaman should speak to this one.
Thanks for having me. This is a two-page ordinance. It arose from a specific application, but it has, of course, global use. The Montessori School on In Street was thinking about building a fence to pin in children. And staff discovered we didn't have an exclusion for fences, so they would have had to go to the Planning Board and get a special permit. And that wasn't really the intent, it hadn't come up before. So working with Jennifer Blanchet and Andy Port, I wrote this amendment to make a sort of a safe haven. So if a fence is under five feet, it can be approved by staff, they don't have to go through a full-on special permit. But there are bright-line rules on what staff can approve to keep them out of controversy. So we added three images of historic walls or fences that are no-brainers, no problem. And then three of what we feel are unacceptable and shouldn't be approved downtown. The one nuance is we want to, you know, the how high to allow staff to go. So you'll see in the language on page two that the maximum height that staff can approve is normally only three feet. But if it has porosity, which is one of the Secretary of Interior standards for people to be able to see through these things, they can go up to five feet. And sure enough, testing that out with the Montessori School, that would work for them. That's pretty much everything I know, but I think Director Port may want to add something.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Agaman. Yeah, I think that's a perfect explanation of this ordinance, and I appreciate your writing and sponsoring and the language for it. We see things that are done on a regular basis as far as permitting in the Office of Planning and Development. Jennifer has been great about routing people for the permitting processes and also noting where there might be greater efficiencies with the same protection of concern for aesthetics and compatibility and visual views and things like that in the downtown, for instance. But a process that might be a little bit more efficient for minor things like that than, say, coming in for a special permit from the Planning Board for something as minor as a fence. So I'll leave it at that.
Planning Board members, do you have any comments or questions?
This is Rick. I guess my only question is, I fully support the intent and the ordinance and what it's trying to do. I guess my question is, could the word porosity be misconstrued? To me, it means, I think of something being porous as being something that water seeps through and that sort of thing. I haven't seen it used in this way for having gaps between physical members of the fence. So I don't know whether there's a definition of porosity somewhere that we'd use, or whether there's a better word. I'm happy to let it go forward if nobody thinks there's a problem with it, it just jumps out at me.
Could we perhaps add the word "visual" before "porosity"?
That sounds great.
If Counselor Agaman does no objections?
Oh, absolutely not. If that helps, let's do it.
Anyone else want to chime in?
Yeah, this is Don. I just have one question, and this actually is just before the insertion in Item D, Roman numerate I, where it has this replacement of windows, doors, signs, and/or awnings. And I guess my question is, is the end door? Should it be, I wasn't sure whether it should be end or... Actually, excuse me, I stand corrected, I apologize to all here. My question actually is on the addition there where it says demolition replacement of fences or site walls. Should that have been end or too? And I guess the reason I ask that, if there was an instance where they had both a fence and a site wall, would they only have to abide by one or the other? So that was my only question, and I'll leave it to someone else that's a lawyer, and there's at least one here, and/or an English major.
Well, actually, it probably should be "or" and a disjunctive, because when we wrote this years ago, the idea was we didn't want applicants to piecemeal projects where they say, "Oh, I'm just doing one door," and then come back a month later and do another one, then another one, and another one. So I'm just doing this on the fly. Yeah, I think it's "or," it's just straight-up "or" and a disjunctive, because you can't do both, you can't do both, because the rest of the sentence says "unaccompanied by any other work."
Okay, thank you.
Bonnie, I have two questions.
Yeah.
One is, the wording that wood, wrought iron, et cetera, is allowed instead of vinyl and aluminum? It's funny to say "instead of," I mean, is the point that vinyl and aluminum are not allowed?
You could say, you could just say "but not," it's just a little inelegant. It doesn't, I see what you mean, you could say "but not."
Yeah, I mean, it's a minor detail, it just...
No, no, again, if you're raising it, that means other people read it that way too, so let's fix it.
Yeah, and then the other question about those materials is that, you know, it's a funny distinction, the one between wrought iron and aluminum, because a lot of the stuff that looks old-fashioned but is more inexpensive is the aluminum type. I agree, I don't like it, but what is exactly meant by wrought iron? Because wrought iron is an old material, I mean, do we mean, I'm just not sure that... I think it might be confusing, the materials, particularly wrought iron and aluminum.
Well, from my perspective, I mean, I took this language after looking at many other standards, including the Secretary of Interior standards in other cities and towns.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not an architect, obviously, but if I had a nickel for every time my mother used the phrase "wrought iron" when I was a kid, I wouldn't need an IRA. So I'm pretty sure wrought iron, to me, is pretty clear of what kind of metal that is.
What about steel? Is steel allowed?
Is steel allowed? Well, I think we're deliberately vague, you know. Again, we said, we say wood is okay, wrought iron is okay, in other words, think of it as safe harbors, but not...
Could we say wrought, could we maybe say wrought iron look?
I don't know, I understand where you're coming from, Leah, this is Jennifer Blanchet speaking. I feel, as I'm the, you know, as the current person interpreting this, if someone were to come in with a black-painted steel fence, the impression would be that of wrought iron. And 99% of the people on the street won't know the difference.
Well, I think what the distinction is, and maybe I'm going into too great detail, but the distinction is a heavy metal versus a light gauge aluminum that's going to break as soon as someone throws their bicycle on it. So I don't know if you want to make a distinction that way, I'll leave that to you guys, I just bring it up as an issue that I see.
Well, I guess I just have a question. Again, I'm not, I'm trying to be practical too, but would the steel that you're talking about, wouldn't that be another historic material? I mean, there was steel hundreds, 100 years ago.
Well, to be honest, I think steel is, I mean, I don't know this in great detail, but I was at Wilson Welding, and they told me that there's no such thing as wrought iron anymore. It's really just a matter of how much carbon is in the steel. And nowadays, they don't really do it, they don't really do wrought iron because it's so much carbon in it, it doesn't, blah, 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 blah. So...
This is Andy Port. I don't know how much concern there is about this particular phrase or the scope of it, but if we could perhaps substitute wrought iron with durable metal, if there's a concern about the durability of what's involved?
That might make more sense.
Or also, it may make sense to say, start it with historical materials such as wood, wrought iron, masonry, be used instead, and then it kind of leaves a little bit of...
I like that.
Yeah, historic materials, wood, comma, heavy, heavy gauge metal, something like that, or heavy metal.
I would still leave wrought iron.
Durable metal, that worked.
You can still procure wrought iron, historic wrought iron.
But if you say "such as," then you're not making it exclusive, then you're...
You opened it up a bit.
Yes.
So what is the final language we're agreeing to?
I don't like...
So I would say, yes, historic materials, and is that okay with you, Jared? It does make it a little...
Yeah, let me just read it back to you. So historic materials such as wood, comma, wrought iron, comma, masonry, and masonry shall be used, but not plastic, comma, vinyl, comma, aluminum, or other contemporary materials. Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine by me.
Okay, as long as that line was just captured, that's good.
Just structurally, I wonder if some of these could go into subheadings? I don't know if you want to divide it up just to make it a little more readable.
Well, I mean, with your, with, I don't think that would have to come back to the planning board. We can work on that with staff for the potification, make it clear.
Yeah, subparts, maybe.
Yeah. And I just want to say thank you for the photographs, that is going to be really helpful as well.
Yeah, I agree, the more we can use photographs that are off here.
Okay, if there's no further discussion from the Planning Board, I turn it over to the Planning and Development Committee to take your vote.
Well, do we want to have any public comment?
Oh, 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 I am so good at forgetting public comment, I'm at least being consistent, thank you for reminding me. Let's open this to public comment, and if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically, and Andy Port will let you in.
And we have Stephanie Nikotic.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Stephanie Nikotic, 93 High Street. I, at the risk of jinxing anything, I agree with this ordinance with the amendments discussed. And so if I'm the only member of the public who is paying attention, I hope you know that, thank you. Thank you.
And I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public comment portion, and I guess we're handing it back over to you, Counselor Shand.
Counselor McCauley and Counselor Wallace, are there any questions or comments?
I have just one...
I do not have any questions.
Okay. I have one question or comment. The definition of site wall, it's just not defined, or maybe it's defined elsewhere in the ordinance, but is there, I guess it would just be any sort of masonry wall, whether it's kind of a standalone or if it's an actual retaining wall, is that the intent? Are there any other kinds of walls that it might include?
This is Andy, I know Jennifer may want to offer something on this. I think we're assuming that these are walls that are not associated with any, you know, building, they're sort of a standalone element or something that runs separate from the buildings.
Right, but what it includes...
So it's not interfered with the building code, essentially.
Okay, but would it include like a retaining wall as well?
Yes, it would, it would.
Okay.
Yeah, and in fact, I think the one in this photograph is in part a retaining wall on the right side there.
Yeah, on market, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, as long as that's clear, I mean, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. It's not, I think, expressly defined in our ordinance, but it is explained in nauseating detail in the Secretary's standards.
Okay. All right, I have no further comments or questions, thanks.
Okay. Do we want to close the public hearing? Do you want to vote? Bonnie, this is you.
Yes, yes, I've closed public comment, I'm handing it back to you to take your vote.
Do not need to vote first?
I'd be happy to vote, we can, that's a very good idea, we'll vote first, you can take your vote, you can close your meeting and skedaddle, and we'll carry on, how's that?
That would be perfect.
Okay, Planning Board members, may I please have a motion to approve this or recommend this ordinance be adopted by City Council?
So moved as amended tonight?
Rick, okay, a second?
A second.
Who's that, Alden?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Call roll, Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, it goes forward, thank you.
Okay, so I'll take a motion from the councilors.
A motion to recommend and present to the council for approval?
Second.
As amended?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, three to zero. So I'll take a motion to adjourn from the council.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Enjoy the rest of your meeting, Bonnie, and all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll open our first public hearing. It's actually a continuation from June 3 for 342 Merrimack Street, the 6C special permit. And Andy, can you bring in the representative, the first representative, the applicant?
Yes, we have Adam Costa first for the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Adam Costa, with me, Talerman and Costa, hearing on behalf of Dan Lynch and Judy Lynch. They've made an application for a 6C special permit. This is a continuation of a public hearing that got underway back on the last session of the public hearing was on May 6. We had previously been before the board in informal sessions dating back to 2018 to present the proposal. What I'd like to do, with permission, Madam Chair, is just provide a very brief overview of the modifications that we've made to the plans since we were last before you. I won't go back in great detail into what was presented previously or what was presented to you even two years ago, because I presume that board members have the history. But you can see here, we have a brief PowerPoint presentation, you can see the first slide summarizes once again that we're seeking a 6C special permit. It also identifies that since the last meeting, we've addressed what we perceive to be two outstanding items that were identified by members of the board. The first was a...
Excuse me, Adam, excuse me, we only see your logo sign on the slide, we don't see anything else.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm looking at what I think Andy has shared, which is his screen. I see his PDF.
Yeah, Chair, you may be able to split the screen by being able to see both the visual and the cameras.
Am I the only one who's complaining? Everybody else can see it?
I can see it.
I can see.
Yep.
Oh, I see it, yeah, sorry. Yeah, got it, sorry, thank you.
That's okay, Madam Chair, so now that we have that, you can see here, the second bullet is what I was referencing. It identifies two outstanding items following the last session of the public hearing. One was a request that we modify the site plan to show additional improvements specifically to the driveway and sidewalk or walkway areas, and to increase or at least depict some landscaping, some plantings with respect to the secondary house, the second structure that we're proposing for the site. The second of the outstanding items was, we had not yet received approval from the Historic Commission for the restoration plans. You might remember that even going back to 2018, when we were before the board, informally, we recognized that there was a lengthy process and that we needed to coordinate that process with the Historic Commission to get the requisite approvals. And so we've submitted revised plans, I'll show them momentarily on the screen, but we submitted those on May 28 to the board. The Historical Commission has approved demolition plans now and released the demo delay for the front portico portion of the existing historic structure. They did so at their June 11 meeting. They also approved the restoration plan for the preservation restriction at that same meeting. And you'll see in a moment, when I show the plans, the revisions that they requested, which have now been incorporated. So what we had hoped to accomplish tonight was to quickly walk through those couple of changes and then to ideally proceed with a final approval. I see that a draft decision was circulated in anticipation of us proceeding in that manner tonight. So the next two slides, I'll move through them quickly, these are just additional historic photos, or I should say maps or plans, less so photos. We had submitted a few previously with our original submittal back in 2018, and then with our official application for the 6C special permit. And you can see that this property is obviously shown on a number of older plans. This is an 1884 map that shows where you see the star, the location of the property, running from Merrimack Street to Merrimack Court. And then if you go to the next plan, again, you can see here the intersection there between Merrimack Street and Merrimack Court. Here we go, you can see the property is the one that's labeled as the third property from the intersection. It says 342, I'm not sure if you can read that, but it does say it within the actual building footprint. You can see the property, there's a little sort of squiggly line between the property fronting on Merrimack Street and the property fronting on Merrimack Court, showing that those lots had been combined and have been a single lot for some time. So if we go to the next plan, which is the revised plan that we've now submitted, we've made no changes with respect to what I'll say is the left side of the plan, the historic structure, at least in the site plan, we've made no changes to the... At least in the site plan, we've made no changes to the historic structure. Everything you see on the left side of the plan is exactly what was presented to you back on May 6th. So building footprint is the same, proposed improvements are the same. If we can go back, Andy, just for a moment, to the site plan, what we have changed on the site plan is on the right side of this plan, the proposed house that will front on Merrimack Court. Yes, that's excellent. So you can see here that we've essentially made three additional improvements at the request of the board members. There was a concern previously that the plan simply showed the existing gravel drive, which isn't too clearly defined. There's also a bit of a parking area off of Merrimack Court that sort of runs parallel to it. It's a bit of a mess in the area. So what we've done here on the proposed or modified proposed plan is we've shown a proposed parking area. You can see that at the bottom of the plan. We've also shown a proposed walkway running from Merrimack Court to the front entrance to the home. And then we've shown everything else between the front entrance of the home and Merrimack Court as simply being grass yard, and we've showed a variety of proposed plantings to occur in that area to improve the streetscape. So those are the improvements that we added to the plan that were not there previously. We had already discussed at the last session of your public hearing that we had relocated this building to be closer to Merrimack Court at the request of the board and in discussions with other city staff to be consistent with the historic streetscape that exists along Merrimack Court, and the zoning board of appeals granted a variance from both the front yard setback and the side yard setback requirements to allow the house to be placed exactly where you see it here on the plan. And we got that variance back in May of 2019, so just about a year ago. If we turn to the next page of the PDF, you can see here, so these next two pages are the existing elevations and then the proposed elevation. So what you see here are the existing elevations, and the existing elevations show the area being demolished. And then the second page is the proposed elevations. If we maybe stay on page five for the moment, I can identify some of the modifications that are being proposed. You can see here on the plans, and again, I'll walk through them quickly because I don't want to belabor points that were already made at the last session of the public hearing. If we look to the left.
Sorry, this is Andy. Just for the convenience of the board and also for me, sorry, as moderator, do you want to just indicate whether you want the north or east elevation or so forth? I can pull those up closer for the board.
I'd be glad to do that, Andy. Thank you. So the top left corner, the existing north elevation. So you can see here that we've got a few things shown on the existing north elevation. We're showing the rear shed structure, we've called it, on the top right corner being removed. We've also shown the two-story deck and exterior stairway being removed from the rear of the structure. If you proceed to the right, top right corner, which is the existing east elevation, Andy. You can see here, we've got the front portico to be removed. You can see that on the left side of the east elevation. Again, on the right side of the east elevation, you simply see the rear shed structure and the two-story deck that I referenced a moment ago that are also being removed. Bottom left corner of the plan, which is the existing west elevation. This shows the same two things I just referenced, the front portico being removed and then the rear shed structure and the stairway at the rear of the site or the rear of the building being removed. It also shows a window to be removed and an opening being modified to provide for a new side entry that we'll see in a moment. And then if you turn to the bottom right corner of the plan, which is the existing south elevation, you can see here that we're, again, removing that existing front portico or removing the existing front door and removing the shutters for purposes of the renovation or the restoration. Turn to the proposed plans, the next sheet, and maybe we can begin on sheet six in the top left corner again, which would be the proposed north elevation. You can see here what is proposed to be done to the historic structure, which is the existing chimneys will remain. In fact, the existing fireplaces are in good working order. We've got confirmation of that as recently as the past couple of weeks. We're proposing a new second floor deck that will be over the kitchen addition that you see shown. On that second floor deck, there will be a new casement window, which is identified. You can see here on the right side of the same proposed north elevation, we've got new trim at the rear gable to match the existing side gables, as well as new corner boards to match the existing front corner boards and new clavards on the back as well to match what exists. And then there's a new rear entry with a bracketed overhang. If we, to the right, top right corner, we've got the proposed east elevation. You can see, again, the existing chimney is shown. The new rear kitchen addition is also shown on the bottom right side. Again, the new corner boards I just referenced can also be seen in this photograph or this elevation. What is also shown that we've not seen is the existing door transom and surrounding trim, which will remain on the east elevation. We looked bottom left corner of the proposed elevations, the west elevation. Chimneys are shown again, new corner boards matching the existing are shown again. But you can also see the new side entry with the bracketed overhang that is proposed, where that window exists today. And then finally, the proposed south elevation, bottom right corner. You can see here, we've got a new six-over-six window with casing to match the original casing elsewhere. We've got existing side lights and moldings to remain at the front door, existing front door to be replaced with a Simpson six-panel fur door or an approved equal. So these are the plans that resulted, not just from, obviously, our design, but from the discussions that occurred with the Historic Commission, the requests that were made. I did see earlier this week that a copy of the proposed minutes or draft minutes of the Historic Commission's June 11th meeting were provided to board members. I presume they went to board members. I got them from staff. And you can see that there was a great amount of attention paid to the windows in particular. And we've got a detailed key here in the middle of the page, which if you scroll just a little bit to the left of the plan, Andy, from where you are now, and to the notes section right in the center of the sheet, you can see here with respect to windows that there is a key identifying certain windows are older sashes, but perhaps not original, which the homeowner will restore to working order. Windows that are marked with a different marking, the W marking or Roscoe true divided light. Wooden windows with spring balances installed circa 1980, they'll be replaced with wooden true divided light windows. And then there's a third type of window indicated with this M, which is a new Marvin Integrity Ultrac Series simulated divided light window, fiberglass with wood interior, six-over-six light patterns with three-quarters applied mountain bars. So there are a variety of different window styles, and those were all vetted through some lengthy discussion with the Historic Commission. You can go to the next page for me, Andy. So again, I won't speak verbatim what is already in the March 19th, 2020 letter that we submitted, unless, Madam Chair, you ask me to do so before we conclude. But we have gone through the usual 6C criteria within our narrative submittal. We've gone through the additional criteria in Section 10H7 of your ordinance with respect to the issuance of a special permit to indicate that all of the various criteria have been satisfied. Specifically with respect to 6C, we've just got a few bullets here highlighting that originally a by right development of the site had envisioned in addition to the existing structure and construction of a standalone accessory structure that would face Merrimack Court. The Historic Commission has now approved plans for a preservation restriction on the existing structure for the public benefit, allowing us to convert what is now an existing two-family historic structure to a restored, single-family historic structure and to construct a second building on the site, a second dwelling unit on the site to preserve the two-family use of the site. That second structure will be subordinate to the existing structure as Section 6C requires. It's subordinate in a couple of different ways. Number one, the footprint will be at least 10% less than the footprint of the existing historic structure. But in addition to that, because of the grade of the site, not only is the height of the secondary structure already less than the existing structure, but it's a good six, seven, maybe even eight feet lower than the existing structure Merrimack Court is versus Merrimack Street, such that it's going to have that true subordinate look to it as compared to the existing historic structure. There's adequate access provided. That's not an issue with this project. I know sometimes it's an issue that needs to be addressed with 6C requests, but in this case, we've got public ways on both sides of this property so that access to each of these structures will be off of their own respective public ways, Merrimack Street and Merrimack Court. And then, as I indicated before, the ZBA has already granted a dimensional variance to allow for the placement of the new structure in closer proximity to Merrimack Court to maintain the historic streetscape in that area. Finally, last slide, special permit condition. This is something that has been indicated to us would be a condition. I'll be candid, because I was not present and my partner Lisa Mead was at the May 6th meeting. I don't know if this is something that had been discussed at that meeting, but it has certainly been discussed with staff since then. And that is a condition that the petitioner would agree that prior to the grant of an occupancy permit for the proposed new dwelling unit, that a perpetual preservation restriction approved by Historic would be recorded with the Registry of Deeds. And we've done that. We've followed that process before on behalf of other clients. Mass Historic has indicated that it is willing to hold this restriction, given the historic importance of this residence. And obviously, once we negotiate the preservation restriction, which will be in perpetuity, it would go through the usual process for approval, which we require execution by the Historic Commission, execution by the city council, by the mayor, and then also by the Mass Historic Commission as well. So we'll follow that usual process, and that will go on record prior to the grant of an occupancy permit for the new dwelling. Again, with that, I'm not going to belabor the points that are already submitted in the written materials that we've provided, but I'm happy to answer any questions that might be had. I know that my associate, Marissa Miller, has joined the call as well. She's been highly involved in this over the course of the past year and a half or so. And then David Keery, the architect, is also, I believe, on the call if you have questions specific to the elevations or the design of the project.
Thank you very much, Attorney Costa. That was concise under the circumstances. We appreciate it. Before I call for comments and questions from the planning board as well as public comment, I'd just like to know if there is anyone here from Newburyport Historic Commission who would like to speak at this time?
This is Andy Port. I just wanted to note, we have Glenn Richards, the Chair of the Historical Commission, here this evening.
I'd like him just to say a few words about their review and their willingness to hold this preservation restriction. And then we'll open it for further comments to, for any of the resources who are here.
Yeah, thank you, Bonnie. This is Glenn Richards speaking. I assume you can hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for hearing me out. I'm happily, I'm happy that I don't have to contradict anything that Mr. Costa has said pretty much with, although I do wish that it would stop referring to the so-called shed structure. It's a shed roofed addition or shed roofed structure. It's not a shed structure, because that's confusing. It makes people want to think it's some sort of separate accessory building. So just a minor point there. The only, he has correctly stated that we did iron out the requirements for the preservation restriction at our last meeting on the 11th. And basically, the easiest way to think of it is that it had been proposed that certain changes would be made, which would actually be inconsistent with the, if a preservation restriction had already been there, these changes would be inconsistent with that or impermissible. So, but what we have now, with the revisions that have been made, with the windows and so forth, the changes they're proposing to make are consistent with the kinds of changes that would be approved, even if a preservation restriction was in place today. So I'm pretty happy about that. The only other thing I would mention is that on the front door, as the spec sheet that Andy zoomed in on there did say, it gave, you know, I forget the brand, Sterling Stanley something, you know, and a model number or approved equivalent. We didn't really have time to get into that in the meeting, but I just would like the applicant everything to know that I think the commission would just like to, you know, to look at that. My concerns are, is the door that's there today, is it deficient in some way? As in, you know, maybe it's rotted or just not appropriate. You know, I don't really even remember now what it looked like. But we just want to review that one thing. I don't think that's going to be a problem. But other than that, I appreciate the applicant's willingness to, you know, accommodate the necessary changes. That's about all I have to say.
Okay, let me open it up for planning board questions of the applicant at this point and also of Chair Richard's comments on the historic elements. Go for it. Anybody want to start?
Well, I'll start. This is Rick. I don't have any questions about the presentation, really. I guess my question is really more about the process going forward. Are we going to be looking at the preservation restriction prior to making a final vote? As the planning director had suggested, I think, or are we going to be looking to take a vote tonight? And assuming that the preservation restriction will be worked out at some later date? I guess that's my confusion at this point.
Okay. And let me, Andy, did you want to clarify that?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Rick, I thank you for asking that question. You know, just, you know, in a nutshell, my suggestion on that one is that what's important here, I think, is, it needs to be captured at least in a paragraph, which is the scope of the preservation restriction, based on things that I've seen over the years, including a few particulars here in Newburyport. It's always good for us to tighten up loose ends that we find when there's dispute over issues down the road. So in this instance, what we're, I think, talking about is, as long as the scope of the preservation restriction is somehow memorialized in the planning board's approval by reference to another document or in the language of the special permit, I think then we've captured what's important here. What, we would be remiss, I think, and the planning board might be remiss if it approves a special permit without clarifying the scope of the preservation restriction, because we've seen before instances in which, and without going into further detail, other applications or projects in which there's been later dispute about whether the preservation restriction should cover, say, the whole facade of a building versus just one, you know, one side of it. So that being the case, I think it doesn't necessarily need to be with the preservation restriction itself by the planning board, but I think it would behoove the Historic Commission and the planning board and all other interested parties in the city to nail down the details of what that preservation restriction should cover. And of course, as Rick suggested, be recorded, I think is the important part. Prior to the building permit or occupancy permit, at least, in the second dwelling, where the developer gets a financial benefit, it would make sense to have that recorded first before that. But the most important part, I think, to Rick's question, is that we capture the substance of what is important in the preservation restriction within the planning board's decision somehow. That way, it is not later disputed either before the Historic Commission or the planning board or any other entity.
Let me try to clarify that then. We have several points on the list from the report of the Historical Commission. Could we not include those as special conditions for the special permit? And they list everything that is expected to happen, including what Glenn mentioned, that there would be a review and approval by the commission on the final design or decision about the front door.
Yes, that's very well put. That's exactly what I'm suggesting, is that even with the absence of a whole preservation restriction, which is a lengthy document, takes time to prepare, submit to the Historic Commission, the state and so forth, that you could capture it just like that by having, say, bullets, as long as, again, as long as there's agreement between the Historic Commission, as expressed tonight through Chair Glenn Richards, and the planning board over the substance, it could be captured as simple as that. But that way, there wouldn't be the sort of simple phrasing we've seen in the past, which is that there will be a preservation restriction period without any detail as to what that PR covers.
Just that, yeah.
Follow-up question. First of all, was there a recent email or something that I missed about the Historic Commission?
Yeah, the report came out on Monday. We were sent, and it's listed.
I missed it. Sorry. I apologize. I guess the other question is, now, we have talked in the past about having a vote on an application and then confirming the decision at the following meeting. Is this what we'll be talking about tonight?
I think because it hasn't been written up in the draft. The draft is still in draft form, and we just have a whole list of items that are going to go in as special conditions. I would recommend that we go through the decision, add what we want to, and ask the applicant to come back one more time for a final reading of the final version and a vote to keep it really clean. But effectively give them our. But effectively give them our straw decision tonight.
Thank you, Chair Sontag. This is Andy Port. I agree. I think that's always the best procedure is to memorialize the language properly, rather than rushing to try to do it on the fly. So as Bonnie noted, that there was a report that we got from the Historic Commission through Glenn, and I was just going to show on the screen right now just some of the bullets that Bonnie had mentioned. What it would allow us to do between now and the next meeting is to properly insert that language as a condition or, you know, subcondition of the permit that the planning board would be issuing. That way, the planning board is actually comfortable with the way it's characterized, what's the requirements and so forth, rather than sort of rushing tonight to say, well, we'll figure that language out. It's, it only adds another two weeks for formality, but it helps to make sure that the planning board is satisfied with the final conditions that are issued.
Anything else, Rick? I just want to make sure Rick's done.
Oh, yes, I am. Thank you. I found that email. I just hadn't expected to see it. So I found it. Thank you.
Okay. Who is the next person?
Sorry, this is Leah. Andy, could you go back to that elevation, the proposed elevation?
Sure. Yep, just one second. That's the front facade you're looking for, correct?
Yeah. I just noticed now that the lower windows are different than the top windows. The lower are six over one and the top are six over six. Is there an explanation for that?
I don't know if the applicant or Glenn Richards even could speak to that.
Yeah, am I still audio wise? Okay, thanks. It's, this is somewhat conjectural, but those, the windows on the first floor, which I had an opportunity to examine fairly closely, at least one of them, when we did a site visit a couple of weeks ago, they are old. My suspicion that, or the most likely, what happened most likely is that those lower windows, when they updated to the brick revival style, they also, they took, they didn't change the window opening size and all that, but they did, they put in those six over one windows. They are fairly old on the first floor, but they didn't do that on the second floor. They just, you know, kept the six over six. I, you know, it does look a little bit odd, I agree. But I think what, where, the situation we're in is that it's one of those historical oddities that is historic in its own right. You know, just as the house itself, it has proportions and various attributes of a federal house, but has been, it has had the brick revival moldings and so forth applied to it. So it's kind of a mixed bag, so to speak, which makes it interesting in its own right. And that's, you know, I think what both the applicant and the store commission, you know, has agreed to preserve. So, yeah, I know that it's probably not the best explanation, but that's my best guess as to what probably went on there.
Thank you.
While we're here, could I ask a question of Glenn? I see the shutters are not in the final, the proposal of the, for the change. What's coming off and staying off?
That's an excellent question and a little bit embarrassed to admit that when I went back and looked, that kind of caught me a little bit by surprise because I did, on that same site visit, I did notice, A, that there was evidence that historic, excuse me, shutters had been installed, you know, quite a while ago, because the pintles that were used to hang shutters were there. Not in every case, a lot of them were missing, but several were still there. And they're there today, although the ones that are there today, some of them are kind of real and the right size, some of them are not. It's kind of, they're kind of all over the map. On the 1980 photo that's on the Form B, that also shows shutters. I have no way of knowing if those are the same ones or not. It's like almost 40 years now. So they may, you know, shutters tend to degrade with time. So at any rate, I think it's worth having a discussion with the applicant on this, you know, the matter of the shutters. Historically, it could kind of go either way. I'm going to talk to, one of our commissioners is really into the sort of architectural history. It's our vice chair. I think I might want to talk to her to see if we can get some kind of consensus within, at least within the commission, as to whether it would be more appropriate to have them or not. And then, you know, talk to the applicant about it. I don't know how strongly the applicant feels about them being there or not.
Can you tell me if this issue of shutters was discussed at all in your meeting?
I don't recall it coming up.
I just hate to hold up the entire decision based on shutters, you know, one architectural feature. I'm sorry. That's what I'm getting at is, you know, how strong an issue is this? And definitely then, it would mean that we would, we're continuing in any way to vote on the final version of the decision. So you'd have to make a decision in the next two weeks, and we could add it in or take it out depending on what you decide.
Yeah, I don't think it's a strong, you know, I don't think it's a so-called showstopper, Bonnie. I think I'd also want to look at, there's a sort of a twin house, also owned by Courier. Same vintage, same treatment, federal house, updated. It's got the exact same window treatments and moldings and all that stuff. Does not have that portico bay thing over the front entrance. But other than that, it's practically a twin. I don't recall that having shutters, but I might want to take another look at that. But anyway, short answer, no, I don't consider it a showstopper. I think it would be historically accurate, probably either way.
Well, we have the time to give you the option to review it. If you can do it before our next, we're anticipating July 1st, that we will confirm the language of the decision and take a vote.
Okay, well, would that require, you know, an agenda item on one of our public meetings? Or is it a question of like the, or more of an offline?
If you can add it to your agenda on the, what is it, your meeting, the 20?
25th, I believe.
Yeah. And clarify it then and send, you know, your decision. It can be incorporated if that turns out to be the one outstanding issue. We can easily incorporate that and still take the vote on the final.
Okay. I'm making a note right now. Thanks.
All right. In the meantime, planning board members, other questions or comments on anything, not just historical?
I have a question, Andy. It says that they still need to go before the Concom and then that DPS would make recommendations for the tree and sidewalk. Is that something that we need to be thinking about prior to approving?
Yeah, we try, that's a good question. Thank you. We try to take into account specific recommendations from the Department of Public Services for sidewalk entries per the city ordinance. Unfortunately, it's been difficult. Everybody's been very busy with lots of unusual situations because of the COVID crisis. So we haven't been able to get a response from Public Services on this particular application as to what the specific should be. But we have been carrying some boilerplate language in the decisions in various instances so that the applicant can proceed. What it requires is for the applicant to install sidewalk entries in accordance with anything that comes from Public Services. That way, it's accomplished, you know, in accordance with the city ordinance. It's preferable to memorialize whatever the specifics are. If it's a concrete sidewalk, no sidewalk, a brick sidewalk in the decision. But recognizing that we've tried, and Caitlin may want to weigh in this, but because we've reached out to the Department of Public Services and that no fault of the applicants, we just haven't been able to get a clarification on that. We think that's fine to close out on that one. With the Conservation Commission, the applicant's always responsible for making sure that plans that are submitted to different permitting entities jive with each other. And therefore, if there's any modifications that would be needed in your plans, it would have to come back to you or the Conservation Commission, depending on the circumstances. However, I think it's unlikely to be something that would change on this particular project. And the applicant may want to speak to that, but they're not obligated, per se, to obtain the other permit prior to this one. So I don't think either of those scenarios will be an issue for this particular application.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Bonnie.
Yes, Don.
I guess this may go to Andy or yourself, Bonnie. But in the PowerPoint presentation, it, the page six of seven, the first bullet, it says, "By right development envisioned addition to existing structure and construction of standalone accessory structure facing Merrimack Court." I would, I just want to confirm, I agree with that statement. However, the vision addition would have to be less than 500 feet. My second point in my comment, I'm just trying to get confirmation that my interpretation of our ordinance is correct. If, if, and I don't think it's likely, but if this application was denied and the planning board in the past has been concerned about quote-unquote massing, they would still have to go back, they could mass whatever they could do with a variance, dimensional variance by the ZBA. Because the current dimensional variance by the ZBA is for two separate buildings. So to the extent they want it, if this was denied and they wanted to make something bigger and we were concerned about this massing, I just want to be sure that my understating of zoning ordinance is that they would have to go back to the ZBA to get a dimensional variance for now, a much larger structure that would be increasing, you know, dimensions that are not within our ordinance. Is that correct, Andy or Bonnie?
Yes, yeah. I mean, the by right would obviously have to be, if it were an addition, would have to be less than 500 square feet. And any other additions or very dimensional exceptions would have to go for a variance. So that's not by right, but that's not what it's saying here. It's just saying.
No, I understand that. It was two-part. The first part and the second was, thank you.
We, it's covered. If we, if they weren't doing this with us and wanted to do either of those scenarios you described, they'd have to get permission from the ZBA.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is this true silence or is somebody trying to unmute themselves? I never know. All right, I'm going to call for public comment. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically and Andy will let you in.
We have Stephanie Nikotich.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Stephanie Nikotich, 93 High Street. As a member of the public, I very much appreciate the amount of work the Historical Commission has done and the applicant to get this right and also the planning board. And I appreciated the question about shutters. My main concern is with the preservation restriction. Because that is a perpetual preservation restriction is the public benefit here. And there is no such thing as a perpetual preservation restriction without Massachusetts Historical Commission approval. And I think we have had, and Director Port can correct me, but we've had a couple of situations where the policy of the city became, you can't get a building permit until you have an approved preservation restriction. So here we are with an occupancy permit. So I am really concerned that we're, you know, you are all moving forward and all this work could be done. And then Massachusetts Historic Commission could say, well, for these whatever reasons, we are not going to approve this. And if they don't approve it, it's not perpetual. So, you know, I have a real concern about the timing of that and whether or not this needs to, the Massachusetts Historic Commission needs to approve this before building permits are issued. Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the public before we respond to that one? There's nobody else who wants to speak, Andy?
None at this time. No, thank you.
All right. We'll close the public comment section and I'll let you speak to that. I do have some memory of other similar situations, but you're the authority, so please weigh in.
Thank you. I agree with some of the comments or concerns that Stephanie had raised, seeing applications over the years. I think what's important here is that it does, at least currently under the statute in Massachusetts, it needs to be approved by the Massachusetts Historical Commission to be perpetual. That there is, unfortunately, depending on the timing, and Mass Historical's resources are somewhat limited. It takes a while sometimes to get a preservation restriction drafted, reviewed by them, approved and so forth. That requires some coordination between the applicant, the Historical Commission locally, the Historic Commission at the state level, and then depending on the circumstances, other parties. For instance, the city council authorization for the PR and so forth to be signed. So it depends on the given circumstances, but it can take a while. I have no objection to what Stephanie is suggesting, which appears to be in this special permit condition as suggested by the applicant, would be to change occupancy permit to building permit, I think, for the proposed new dwelling unit. I think, based on experience, that certainly provides better protection for the planning board and Historical Commission's interests in this permit and this project here if there is a quote-unquote "public benefit." I think based on what I've seen over the years, it's in the city's interest to push up the timing that the applicant needs to deliver something that's a so-called "public benefit" and before there's a financial benefit, if you will, from the development scheme that's being proposed. That way, there's follow-through. So I have no objection to that whatsoever, but that is a decision for the planning board to make, whether to make that before occupancy permit or building permit. I think that's, in essence, what is being suggested here.
Let me propose something else that I know we have done in the past, and that is to accept a letter of intent, for lack of a better term, from the Mass Historical Commission. Because of what you say, it does take them quite a long time to go through the entire process. That would possibly allow the applicant to get a building permit, but the occupancy permit would be held until the Historical Commission, the preservation restriction is actually registered. We do a two-step process like that.
Adam, Chair?
Yes.
If I could address that comment, because I think I have some information that maybe could be of some assistance to the board. So I appreciate Stephanie's comment as well. And I certainly, as one who often represents boards and wants to be mindful of protecting municipal interests, I appreciate the justification for it. At the same time, sometimes representing applicants, I can appreciate that, especially with a project of this sort, there's something to be said where that process can be not just a days or a weeks-long process, but a month-long process. There's something to be said for allowing the applicant not really to realize a financial benefit. In fact, because those are the terms that Andy Port used, because there really would be no financial benefit realized by the applicant in having the ability to spend money pursuant to a building permit to build the second residence. The idea is that the applicant is spending money proceeding with a project in anticipation of putting that property under agreement, therefore acquiring the funds necessary to engage in the renovation of the historic structure. There's something to be said for allowing that to happen, which is really a risk to the applicant too, while this process is playing out, this what could be a months-long process. With respect to getting some confirmation from Mass Historic, I think that makes good sense. And in fact, between the time when we started this process back in 2018 and now, we did get that confirmation and we submitted with our original application. By original, I mean the official application for the 60 special permit that we submitted a few months ago. We submitted with it as Exhibit A, a letter that was provided to our consultant by Michael Steinitz, the Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer. We had sought this letter dating back to 2018. And the letter indicates specifically that the property is historically significant for its architecture, associations and/or archaeology, and qualifies for the protections of perpetual preservation restriction under Mass General Laws, Chapter 184, Sections 31 to 33. So we do have in writing essentially the equivalent, I think, of what you're referring to as a letter of intent, that Mass Historic is of the opinion that this property, because of its significance historically, qualifies for perpetual preservation under the applicable statutory scheme.
Well, that's good. Then you've already met that requirement. I'm just making a note here, which I hope will go into the decision, that that is, that particular letter is called out as one of the documents having been submitted with the application. So Caitlin can. So if Caitlin can take a note of that, that'd be great. Um, so that leaves us with, um, where we are now, which is, um, requiring that the preservation restriction be recorded before the occupancy permit for the second structure is, um, issued. Board members, please weigh in, let us know what you're thinking.
I agree. This is Don, I, I agree. I believe that the public comment was probably a situation where for whatever reason it doesn't get, the developer will eventually put pressure either on the planning board or others, and then something could actually be getting a certificate occupancy without that actual historic preservation being registered. So I think I understand this potential scenario for that, but I personally am very confident that to the extent the planning board would have to overturn something, as long as I'm on the planning board, that will not happen.
Anyone else like to weigh in on that, please? Okay, so we'll leave that as a special permit condition, which leads me now to reviewing the draft decision. Andy, if you can pull that up, we're not going to go through it in excruciating detail, because I believe Attorney Costa has covered most of the details, but just to ensure that we've gone through it and that there are no, um, issues outstanding.
Sure. Is, uh, just let me know if there's any particular section you'd like to take a look at.
Well, the language has to change in, um, in the, in the decision findings, um, because it references historical commission activity, which now has been, um, confirmed. So I think that line, let's look at bullet point number two under, um, decision findings. Yeah. So that's a placeholder for the fact that it has in fact been, um, approved by the historic commission or whatever language you want to put in there.
Right. And I think from my perspective, that seems to be the only outstanding detail to plug in, everything else is in order, I think.
Well, we also have to be sure that all the, the special conditions are now updated to reflect each of the items in the, um, historical commission, um, report.
Agreed.
Other than that, I believe it's all covered. Yes, you're right. So, um, if there's no further discussion, have I forgotten anything, anybody? Okay, if there's no further discussion, I could take a motion to continue, um, all right, date, July 1st. I swore there would be nothing else put on that agenda because of our large controversial public hearing that night. This could be a little bit of discussion because we'll have a follow-up on the shutters. But other than that, that's it. So, um, I think we could probably handle it at the end of the meeting with two other even shorter items that are on that. So I would recommend July 1st, unless Andy, you feel we should put it out to July 15th.
No, I, I have no objection to that. I would agree, I think, as I understand that, that would be clarification from the historical commission, you'd have that in hand at that point relative to the shutters, and if the applicant needed to revise anything on the plans, that could be shown. And, uh, and then also the language in this particular condition here relative to the historic preservation restriction, I have no objection, I think that's definitely doable.
Okay, so there are basically three items that you've just identified that we will go directly to, and then once those are resolved, we're ready to, um, take our vote.
Agreed.
Okay, then I will, uh, take a motion to continue this item to July 1st.
So move to Rick.
Thank you, Rick. Second?
Well, second, it's Beth.
Who's that?
Beth.
Oh, Beth, sorry, yes. Um, and I'll take a roll call vote. Um, if you're not voting on it, you can abstain. Alden Clark?
I'll, I'll vote in favor if I may.
No, you have to abstain because it's a continued hearing that you weren't here for.
Correct, that's what I thought, so I'll abstain.
Thank you. Uh, Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
I have to abstain.
That's what I thought, thank you. Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, um, thank you, Attorney Costa, and Glenn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the board, we'll see you on, uh, July 1st.
Good, thank you. All right. We are now going to do something slightly different than what's on the agenda. I mean, we're going to do it, but we're going to do it in a different way. The next two items, if you, as well as application completeness vote, on seven Malcolm Hoyt Road and three Stanley Tucker Drive are closely linked, it's the same owner, they're budding properties, and there is overlap in some of the, um, uh, application pieces. So we thought that'd be best to take them together. So I'm gonna, um, proceed to open those right now as one public hearing. And I believe there's a board member who some, has something to say.
Yes, um, I am going to recuse myself, um, because I understand the applicant is represented by Jeff Roloff's and, um, I work for Jeff's firm, I've not worked on this, um, matter, but I am going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, um, I think we're ready to hear from Jeff Roloff's, I believe.
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, good evening, it's really, I'm really sorry that I'm not able to be in front of all of you again, uh, this evening, but this is the reality. So I'm going to give a, just a real quick overview of these two projects, and then I'm going to turn it over to our project engineer, Peter O'Gran. So Zampel, uh, is the, is an entity that owns three adjacent properties here, 17 Malcolm Hoyt, uh, Drive and three Stanley Tucker Drive, which are the two properties that are the subject of these applications. They also own the adjacent property at five Stanley Tucker Drive, all three in the industrial zone. Zampel acquired these, uh, moved to Newburyport, I should say, in the late eighties, early nineties. They constructed the two buildings, uh, that they're proposing to expand now in the late eighties, early nineties, and at that time, the site plans that were approved actually, um, depicted the expansions that they're now proposing. It just took them a while to get around to doing it. So they're proposing expans, expansions to both of these buildings. The primary purpose is to accommodate scaffolding and other equipment and inventory that they have already at the sites, largely stored outdoors, um, and also stored at their building at five Stanley Tucker Drive. So these building expansions will, um, make it a lot easier for them to store their inventory in a way that's, um, efficient and protected from the, the weather and from visibility from other properties. This application was the, or both of these applications or projects were the subject of review by the Conservation Commission last summer. Uh, as part of that process, uh, there was landscaping, uh, there were landscaping plans submitted, there was peer review by Phil Christensen on the stormwater drainage issues, the resource areas were delineated and, and reviewed, and ultimately the Conservation Commission approved both projects. In front of you now, let me just quickly run through what we've submitted to the planning board. We've submitted initial application packages for both of these projects in mid-April. Those included site plans, landscaping plans, uh, detailed architectural drawings of the building expansions by our architect, John Saba. Since then, we've had tech review, uh, meetings. Peter O'Gran, our project engineer, has been coordinating with Phil Christensen, the board's peer review consultant, and as part of, and in response to those, uh, review proceedings, Peter did prepare updated stormwater calculations, he added an additional detail to the, uh, site plans related to the drainage systems there at both sites. Um, we submitted recently a revised landscaping plan only because there was a, there were two trees that were depicted in, in a driveway on 17 Malcolm Hoyt that were intended for the yard, not the driveway itself, so that was corrected in a landscape plan that you now have. Um, and in review by, in review with the fire department, the, uh, parking area that was originally proposed behind the three Stanley Tucker Drive building, um, we've, we've agreed to prohibit parking in the, the area shown behind that expansion, and we'll keep it open for, uh, fire department, uh, vehicles in the event of an emergency. So you do have some, you know, revised materials that came in since, uh, April, uh, but they're minor revisions, additional details requested by the peer review consultant in the fire department, but generally the projects otherwise are the same as what you saw in the April packages. We've also submitted waiver requests of some of the seminal requirements here. Those are spelled out in letters from me for both projects dated June 11th and June 15th. They relate to seminal requirements, uh, for information that we thought we sufficiently covered in our package. Phil Christensen, whether, uh, Phil questioned whether or not we needed a waiver, for example, from having to do a full traffic study, um, environmental impact, uh, a more complete environmental impact statement, et cetera. So, um, rather than debate that point, we just submitted the waiver request. So those are spelled out there, and I'm, I'm happy to walk through those if you want. Um, otherwise I'll just leave it to my letters, at least for now.
And this is Andy Port, I just wanted to jump in there and say, the office has no objection to any of the waivers that were requested.
Great, thank you, Andy.
And, and while we're interrupting, may I just say that, um, we have, we're going to have to take a completeness vote, which will also include the waivers before we, if we get to that point, take a vote on the application itself. So I'm not going to forget any one of those three before we're done tonight.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so with that introduction, I think I'll pass, uh, the presentation over to Peter O'Gran, so that he can walk through the site plans and give you a little more detail related to the proposed expansions and the related drainage systems. Thank you.
And, uh, Peter, this is Andy Port, just clarify if there's a particular drawing you'd like, I'm happy to pan around for you. Jeff, I have, uh, asked Peter to unmute himself, I'm not sure if he's having trouble with that.
Um, okay, you see that he's connected from your end?
Yeah, he appears to be connected, but, uh, still muted on his end.
Okay, um, well, while he's trying to work through that, and I'm hoping, Peter, you can figure that out.
I, I think I'm muted right now.
There you go. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, thank you for the opportunity of appearing before this Zoom meeting, and yeah, Andy, if you could put up the, uh, 17 Malcolm Hoyt first, I would just soon discuss that one first, if it's all right.
Sure, yep, do you want just the site layout there?
Yeah, the site layout, the one you had up was actually the, uh, uh, landscape plan and the site layout plan would be, we, that would be better if you got it right there. So, as Jeffy pointed out, uh, both these, uh, and, and the, the chairwoman pointed out as well, both these, um, uh, projects are related, they're basically warehouse expansions only for two existing facilities that Zampel owns in, uh, the Newburyport Industrial Park. 17 Malcolm Hoyt Drive, which that's not what, what you've got up now unless my screen didn't change. There you go, that's 17. Uh, 17 Malcolm Hoyt Drive is a facility currently exists of about 12,000, uh, 700 square feet, uh, small office space and a fairly large, um, warehouse, uh, space. And as Jeffy pointed out, the expansion area of approximately 19,000 square feet was shown on the original, uh, plan when this was approved for the industrial park some many years ago. Uh, it's not exactly the, the same building because we've had to make a couple, we had to make a couple of changes to be consistent with zoning, but it's essentially the building that was, uh, shown at that time. And as a result, the parking and circulation, uh, does not change at all. We still have access and egress to Malcolm Hoyt Drive, which is down on the southerly portion of the property, down at the bottom of your screen, and also access and egress to Stanley Tucker Drive up on the, uh, northerly end or, or, uh, upper end of the, um, plan. Uh, so there's no change in access and egress at all. As far as utility is concerned, it's intending to use, uh, facilities, electric and so forth, that are fed to the existing building. We do however anticipate that we will have to create, uh, a new sprinkler connection for this building, and that would go in Stanley Tucker Drive, and maybe Andy, you could point it out, it comes off the water line on Stanley Tucker on the upper portion, go to your left, yep, back to your right a little. Uh, right, right near the corner of that square there, there's a, a new six inch water line that needs to be constructed. As far as parking is concerned, um, we believe there's definitely adequate parking, both from a zoning standpoint and also from an experience standpoint. I've been, uh, familiar with this property for quite some time, and, uh, the, it's not anticipated to change the Zampel operation as a result of this, uh, this expansion. As Jeff mentioned, it's, it's only for, uh, new, uh, enclosed space to house a lot of materials that they already have. Uh, so they're not increasing the number of employees, and under the zoning, uh, standpoint, uh, there are 15 employees which require 11 spaces under your zoning, and no, um, company-owned vehicles that are associated with this site. They're actually provided 40 spaces on the site, so that, that results in, in ample parking. And every time I go there, there's always plenty of parking available, uh, on the site, it's, it's never up to capacity. Jeff mentioned the drains, we did start with the Conservation Commission here because we thought there were a lot of, uh, concerns that they might have, and we thought it best to get those solved, so we knew what we could do before we moved forward with the planning board. And what we've done is, uh, incorporated rooftop, uh, detention, uh, on, on both these facilities, actually. The soils in the industrial park, they're all still in play, uh, there's very little opportunity. Everybody all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, there's very little opportunity for infiltration, and so it was agreed that what we really needed was flow attenuation and detention, because there are some drainage systems in the park that are, are over capacity. There's a large existing, uh, retention pond on the site that you can see on the right-hand side of your screen, um, and there really wasn't much opportunity to increase that. So what we've done is we've got, uh, actually two levels of rooftop, and we've got two, uh, drains that come off the roof, uh, having, uh, rooftop detention, uh, to mitigate for the imperviousness that's being added by the, the roofs. Um, when we talked with conservation, they were concerned with, uh, doing some plannings, and, uh, they primarily wanted plannings that they thought would take up, uh, water and, uh, put them along the banks of the existing retention pond. So we, uh, hired the services of a landscape architect who I work with on a regular basis, and he suggested certain types of plants that are shown on the planting plan, uh, which Andy had up, uh, earlier. And all of those plantings that they asked for really were, in this case, along the banks of the existing pond. We, uh, we also talked about lighting, and there's to be no change as far as the existing parking lot lighting, there's no change in the configuration of the parking lots. We've indicated the existing parking lot lights that are here, we are asking to put three, uh, DocSky compliant, DocSky compliant wall packs, um, on the proposed addition. Two of those are shown on the north end of the building, actually, they're not, not shown on this plan, they're on the site plan, but two of them are on the north, what I call a north end of the addition, and one of them is on what I would call a west side of the addition, uh, lighting the loading dock area, there's a new, uh, loading dock area. If you, if you go back to the, uh, site plan, it shows three, three lights. And those are just, they're just, yeah, the three lights shown there, it's, it's with the arrows, and there, there was one on each side of the, the north end of the building, and one by this loading dock area with a 20-foot, um- dimension is indicated, where we have a new access to the building for loading dock. There's an existing loading dock. As you go further south along this west wall, that's, that's a loading dock height on the existing storage area. I think that pretty fully explains what we're asking to do as far as this. And now if we might switch to three Stanley Tucker Drive, we could describe in a little more detail what we're asking for there. Three Stanley Tucker is an existing facility, as Jeff mentioned, owned by Zampel. The existing is a small office space and a large storage area, contains about 18,500 square feet in its existing condition. And we are asking to add a warehouse building expansion of 9,688 square feet. And again, this is very much the same expansion area that was shown when the site plan was originally approved, when the building was first built into the park. Much like 17 Malcolm Hoyt Drive, access and egress to the site is not going to change. There are, there's access and egress on both the east and west sides of this building. Parking for the small office spaces in the front of the building and on the side of the building. And that doesn't change. There were, as Jeff mentioned, five parking spaces that were behind the existing storage area. When I originally designed it, I had added those five parking spaces to the rear of the proposed building expansion. But through the design process, the fire department indicated that they wanted to keep that paved area for access in the event of a, of a fire or some kind of other emergency, to be able to both gain access to the rear of the building and also to be able to turn their pump a truck around. So we looked at it and from a zoning standpoint, there was plenty of parking on this site as, as well. Doing the analysis for the parking, and again, from experience, there's, there's always parking spaces available here. By the zoning, there are 25 employees that are employed here, requiring 19 spaces. And there are two company vehicles that are housed here for a total of 21 spaces. There was originally like 44 spaces provided. When we deducted the five spaces requested by the fire department, there were 39 spaces remaining, still being compliant with zoning. And we added a note to the plan that's down the very bottom that says that the area is to be reserved for access and turnaround area. Precisely the same as 17 Malcolm Hoyt Drive, the, the soils here are not conducive at all to percolation. These are all sedimented soils. They're all silts and clays. And so the concern from a conservation standpoint was again, flow mitigation like it was on 17 Malcolm Hoyt. And we provided rooftop detention on this building as well to make up for the impervious area. And that rooftop detention will ultimately discharge on the westly side of this building into an existing drain that drains into a kind of a ditch area, which is a resource, and, and ultimately into the drainage system of the industrial park. And as far as lighting is concerned, we actually didn't show any proposed lighting on this plan. But as I do this, getting ready for this meeting, I thought that, that, I don't think there's any place where we need to provide lighting because we're not going to have active parking behind the building. The only thing I think we probably would like to have, again, a Sky, DocSky compliant wall pack on the easterly side of the building. If you can see on the easterly side, as you enter the easterly side of the building, you can enter into the, a big garage door in the building on that side. I think we would probably like to have a, a wall pack on that, which is, is actually not shown on that. I think that kind of explains what we're interested in. I maybe should just address that we, we also in our application to Conservation Commission had requested the possibility of building a link for a forklift between this building and the adjoining building, which is also owned by Zampel. It's not certain that that would be built. We did get approval from the Conservation Commission on that and, and got word from the building inspector that we wouldn't need any zoning relief on it. So that, that feature is shown on this plan as well. Although it may not be built, but what it would be, would be a, a proposed bridge structure, which would cross over the resource area and provide access only for forklifts running between the two buildings. As we, of the, Zampel has a tremendous amount of scaffolding as well as wholesale materials that they, that they sell. And they do have some forklift traffic that runs between this building and the building next door. They already have communication on site between 17 Malcolm Hoyt and 3 Malcolm Hoyt Drive. With that, I think that explains what we are trying to accomplish. And I'd be happy to answer any questions through the chair that people might have, as well as the rest of the design team. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll hold all the questions till we've heard from everybody. I believe the architect wants to speak as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, I could, Andy, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes. Just to clarify, if there's a particular plan you want to pull up?
Okay, I will do that. Yeah, John Sawa, 19L In Street, Newburyport. And if you could put 17 up, Andy? Maybe the rendering. There you go. Well, we are lucky in Newburyport to have a really excellent industrial park with premier companies. Some Fortune 500, at least they used to be, but, and Zampel is a premier company. And I think that they've, their existing buildings were done at the time when concrete block infill with steel frame was pretty popular. You can drive around the park. I actually have done quite a few of them there. And that was sort of the way things were done back then. But as you know, the energy codes don't treat those buildings very well. And the intent of Zampel was to try to give, number one, these old buildings, some sort of insulation value. And number two, try to create some unity with all their buildings to put forth a more comprehensive, organized building master plan. So that's what we tried to do here. We, we, we matched the refractory red, if you would, because that's how their company originally started off. So the bands you see are a brick color. And then they're mixed in with a gunmetal gray panel. And these are sandwich panels. And a thinner sandwich panel will go on the surface of the, of the brick buildings. And the new buildings will have probably a five or a six inch sandwich panel. Essentially, the designs are, are not just flat walls. We've, we've indented them. So we have some shadow lines. Overall, the buildings are very similar. They are just warehouses, but you know, we try to make warehouses as, as nice as we can. And I think we've, I think we've achieved that. Not complicated buildings. These are just housing scaffolding. Just on a side note, Zampel actually produced all the scaffolding for old iron sides. So that's a, a pretty, pretty nice project. So yeah, that's, that's it for me, unless I can get some questions from you.
Jeff, do you have any other presenters?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take questions and comments from board members. Who would like to speak first? Anybody? See, everybody muted. So that means you're probably not ready to speak. All right. Let me open this for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak, Andy?
I'm not seeing anyone in the public. Actually, it looks like everyone is associated with the other applications.
Okay, so we'll close that. How about looking at the decision first for, is there anything in particular that we should look at in any of these decisions, Andy?
Bonnie, excuse me. I'm, I'm sorry. I was going to speak, but I wanted to see if anyone from the public spoke before I
Oh, okay. Sorry, Don.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Probably should have realized there weren't going to be any public comment, but never say never. Could you tell me, I guess for the applicant or, or, you made it, what is the 100-year flood elevation, please? And what is the level of this building above the 100-year flood elevation?
I, Andy Port, do not know that off the top of my head, but Peter may know because he's, I know he's been doing a lot of plans in the business park and on this particular site. He may know off the top of his head. Peter, do you have?
My recollection is that these are above the 100, but I don't remember what it was. Let me see if it's indicated on the plan.
Sorry about the dog.
No, I, I don't think we've actually indicated it. It's, by necessity, these floors have to be level so they can go from, from area to area. But my recollection was that we looked at this and it was, the buildings themselves were outside the flood zone, but I could, I could get that information.
And, and the other reason why I'm asking, and again, I, I think sometimes this, this should be the role of the applicant, but I do think that there's been some precedent, although it's perhaps more visible closer to the waterfront, that the city is concerned about sea level rise. And if you take a look at some of the projections, they, they show in some areas of the industrial park that it can be flooded, which is four or five, six feet, depending upon whose theory assumptions, et cetera, you believe with sea level rise. So I was just curious if that was a consideration, but I won't belabor that point, if I may. The, the second one is, and thank you very much for talking about a bit of energy. And I always feel compelled to bring these issues up. So I'll apologize to, to, to the folks in the planning board that, that already heard this. But have you, did, did anyone really take a, an analysis of whether a net zero building would have really made, would have been cost beneficial over a life cycle with, with a reasonable, favorable eternal rate of return? And again, if you, if not, that's okay. I'm just curious because some people think that that should always be part of what we do because they think net zero buildings are cheaper than whatever you're doing. It's an energy issue, but it's not a net zero building. So I was just curious if that thought process, what was, what was in your design process?
I'm, John, can you speak to that? I might be able to address that. John Sawa. You know, if you're familiar with a lot of the normal metal buildings, pre-engineered, yeah. They're usually a sort of a thin corrugated exterior with a, with a panel that has standard insulation, liner panels sometimes, you can see when you walk into these buildings. And they're really not great. And Zampels have actually elected to go with a really nice insulated sandwich panel here, where the exterior is, is pretty much flush and attractive. But the interior is also, I'm talking about the new building now. The interior is actually a finished product. The older buildings, we're, we're going to be covering with a, you know, really an inch thick sandwich panel. That coupled with the older insulated block will, will give a, a really good, much better rating than they have right now. You know, if they were putting something other than scaffolding in these buildings, we might think, you know, offices and things like that, we might have a different design direction. But to their credit, they're making some pretty efficient warehouses here. They're not requiring too many, almost no air conditioning. We're moving, moving the air with fans and enough of insulation so the sprinkler systems won't freeze. But you know, I'm certainly sympathetic to exactly what you're talking about. Given the opportunity, we'll, we'll do it. But this building, we've done the best we can on it.
Thank you. Just, just two more points, if I may, or, or comments. I see on our screen right now, we have the, the block rendering diagrams. And I, and I don't know what's on the roof. And again, it's completely your call. But I do think if you took a look at perhaps adding another four to five PSF on your roof loading and provided solar panels, to the extent you don't have a lot of air handlers, et cetera, up there, I actually think you would find that accretive to your financial performance. I appreciate that Zampel is not in that business, but it, it, it's a perfect contender for, for putting solar energy in, in your buildings. But I'll, I'll leave that just with a thought and you all decide what you prefer to do. The last comment is a question on your site plans. You mentioned some form of a ramp or bridge, et cetera, between the two buildings that would cross over the, I guess, the, the wetland area. I, I tried to look, I tried to look for details on, on the site plans. My, my bad. Did you have details of what that crossing would look like?
Yeah, there were details provided the Conservation Commission. It was in, it was in another plan, although I think, if I'm not mistaken, didn't we show the, the bridge on the detailed sheet?
Okay, if you do, that's, that's fine. I, I just wasn't sure. I, you know, there's a lot of detailed sheets and
Well, what we, what we selected is a, a precast arc structure, which we can put the footings in on either bank and just drop in over the stream so that we have a minimum amount of effect on it. We spent quite a bit of time with the Conservation Commission deciding how that would be done and where it would be placed to be a minimum impact.
Okay, well, thank you. And the last, actually, this is an editorial comment. I just think it's great that small businesses are growing in Newburyport. And as a person that worked in the power industry for many, many decades and familiar with your factory products, et cetera. So kudos to the entire team. Thanks, Bonnie.
Hey, thanks, Don. So I'm going to assume that was the sole planning board member comments. And move on to the decision. Andy, I was in the process of stating for your confirmation that the decision contains findings and standard conditions and no special conditions.
Correct.
Was presented primarily by Jeff. So I don't see any reason that we have to go through all of those.
I agree. I think if the board is comfortable with it, we see no special conditions required for this, for these projects, actually both of them. And so if the board is so inclined, you could motion to approve the draft conditions and, and findings in the decision provided by the staff.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for, first of all, we're going to take votes relating to 7 Malcolm Hoyt Drive, just to keep Linda from going totally crazy on this. And as I promised, the first motion has to be for an application completeness and acceptance of the submittal waivers as listed.
Bonnie, can I just interrupt quickly?
Yes.
It, I just wanted to point out, it's 17 Malcolm Hoyt Drive.
Did I, oh, what was I doing? 17. Yeah, I've got that in front of me. I don't know what I said, but thank you for the correction. So, and those three waivers, just to remind you, are for, from a full traffic report, from a full are for, from a full traffic report, from a full environmental and community impact analysis, and from submittal of cross-sections of the site and buildings. All right, so may I have a motion for that application completeness and submittal waivers decision?
All right, Madam Chair, real quickly, we did submit a fourth waiver request, just to clarify that we're looking for a fourth waiver that was discussed in my June 15 letter, which you may not have even had a chance to see yet. It's a letter that I submitted, providing the owner information for all of the abutting properties, but we've asked for a fourth waiver that would allow us not to have to update the plans to include that information on the plans themselves.
Andy, is that acceptable?
Yes, we have no objection. Jeff actually provided that information, as I was displaying on the screen, a letter with that information. And we see no meaningful benefit to revising or adding that to the plans at this point.
Okay, and that's changed. Okay, so you have that language...
Correct. Correct, we have that, yep. And that's reflected in his letter dated June 15.
Good, thank you. That's, I'm glad I listed those. Will that also be true? Well, we'll wait till we get there. Okay, so this is Seven Malcolm Hoyt Drive. May I have a motion to that effect, please?
Are we approving the completeness? Are we approving the...
Completeness.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, I cut you off. Completeness and submittal waivers together.
Correct, that's what I...
Yes, yeah. Okay, Don makes the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second it. Leah.
Thank you, Leah. And because we're on remote, I have to do a roll call vote. As far, because it's open and closing tonight, everybody's eligible. Alden? Voting?
Yes.
Beth?
She's recused herself, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Now I'll take a motion to approve the site plan review application.
I'll make that motion with the addition of adding the additional waiver that was in a letter from Jeff that we just discussed it. And just one editorial comment, I think we should change in the procedural history with the motion approved. We ought to put Alden's name in there and take James off there in what we received from the planning board.
Been taken care of. Now, you added that extra waiver. I thought that was included in the previous decision.
Well, that was the waiver for submittal. I think now what we're talking about is the major site plan for review, right? There are certain waivers that were requested. Maybe I'm mistaken, Bonnie. What was submission of...
That was a submittal waiver as well.
That's a submittal waiver of the traffic analysis, is that what you're referring to?
No, the letter of June 15 asking not to have to submit updated plans with the names of the owners. Is that a submittal, or is that a site plan review?
It's a submittal, so you've essentially already determined that the application was...
Okay, I stand corrected, Bonnie. I thought the site plans had to have that information on the abutters, but I guess not, okay.
Okay, so back to the motion to approve. Is that your motion, Don?
Yes.
And may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leah. And roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, and Beth is recused. We're going to go through the same order of events, or I do have the right one here, Stanley Tucker Drive. The first motion being application completeness and acceptance of submittal waivers, and I have a motion.
So moved. Rick?
Thank you. Second?
Second, Ann.
Thank you, Ann. Roll call on the vote. Alden?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya? Yeah. Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, and Beth is recused. And now I need a motion to approve the major site plan review for Three Stanley Tucker Drive.
So moved.
Thank you, Rick. Second?
I'll second.
Who's that? The voice I don't recognize yet. It's always Alden. Thank you. And we'll do the roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya? Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes, and Beth is recused. And you are good to go. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all.
Nice to hear your voice again. We look forward to seeing your face the next time.
Thank you, same here.
Board, very much. And Rick, hi.
Hi, John, long time.
Yes, I was a former landlord.
Yeah, right. Thanks again.
Okay, everybody. We are moving on to other business. We have an A and R, which was promised to us on the OSRD for eight, 10, 12, and Colby Farm Lane. And I believe Adam Costa is still here.
I am, Madam Chair.
Good. You can say whatever you want. You're on.
Okay, well, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think I have much to say. Maybe Andy had a plan. There we go. As you can see here on your screens, we've got an approval not required plan for property at eight, 10, 12, and 18 Colby Farm Lane. This is in connection with the OSRD, and so it's a relatively straightforward A and R plan. We've got three lots, proposed lot one, which is the single-family dwelling lot, middle sort of bottom of the page. We've got proposed lot two, which is the proposed OSRD development lot, consists of 1.148 acres. And then we've got proposed lot three, which is the OSRD open space lot consisting of about six and a third acres. We've got a zoning chart on the right-hand side of the plan, even though that's not necessarily pertinent to an A and R endorsement. You can see here that we've got the requisite frontage, which is pertinent, as well as some of the other requirements. And the only thing notable is that the minimum frontage for proposed lot one is 75 feet, where 90 feet is required. But you can see the double asterisk there, which indicates that a waiver was granted from the board. And so this is something that I understand. You probably know better than I do, because it was at the prior meeting of yours that I did not attend. But I understand, I'm the promise to the board in connection with a prior permitting of the property, and so we have now submitted it for your endorsement.
Great. Any questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, then I'll take a motion to endorse this A and R plan.
So moved. MJ?
Thank you, MJ. Second?
I'll second it, Leah.
Thanks, Leah. I'll do the roll call on this. Everybody's eligible. Alden Clark?
Yes.
Beth Delisle?
Yes.
Ann Gardner?
Yes.
Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verde?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. You've got your A and R, Adam.
Okay, thank you all again, and have a nice night.
Thanks, you too. All right, we're into more other business. We're going to approve the minutes, and then I want to take a break and have a little chat with Alden before we go into our discussion of 6C. So let's just have a motion to approve the minutes for June 3.
So moved.
Don, was that you?
It was actually Rick, but I'll second it if that's okay.
Okay, Rick made the motion, Don seconded it. And I do apologize, but this is remote procedure. I need to call everybody's name. Alden, obviously, you have to abstain.
Staying.
Okay, Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. I forgot to say that the usual crew of reviewers has reviewed it, and there are minor modifications that weren't worth bringing up to your attention, so they're not even worth saying is amended. So this is the welcome to Alden that I wanted to have before we get into any further discussion. And what we usually do is just go around, and each of us says a little something about ourselves, those of us who he doesn't already know. And then he gets to introduce himself. So nothing fancy, as much or as little as you want to say. But I think it'd be the best we can do under the circumstances. So I'm just going to call on you as I see you on my screen, if you don't mind. Leah?
Hi, Alden. I'm Leah. I'm a practicing architect. I do residential design, have for about 20 years or so. I live in the South End. I got raised two boys here.
Thank you.
Hi, Alden. Likely, we're neighbors here in the South End. Welcome to the planning board. Next to Bonnie, I guess I've been here longer than anyone else. That just means I'm an old man, but I'm retired, enjoying it, and look forward to working with you. Good luck, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Beth?
Hi, Alden. I'm Beth Delisle. I am an environmental and land use attorney. I work for Jeff Roloff, who was just presenting. I live in the North End, very close to Rick and Tanya. And I have three kids. They are seven, nine, and 11. And I grew up in Newport, moved away for a long time, and then now I'm back. I've been on the board for a year. So I am the other new-ish person.
Ann?
Welcome, Alden. This is Ann Gardner. I too live in the South End. Happily retired, these days enjoying my garden and kayaking and getting back on my bike. So welcome to the planning board. Look forward to meeting you in person.
Great, thank you.
MJ? MJ, you have to unmute yourself.
Hi, Alden. Sorry about that. MJ Verde. I've been on the board for four years, actually, next month, I think. I also am another South Ender. I practice interior design and on my own, and I consult to another firm. I have a couple of kids. I've been here 12 years. And working part-time and doing this on the side, so welcome. Hope it's fun for you.
Thank you.
Linda, can you stop typing to hit the unmute to say hello?
Hi, Alden. I'm up in Maine, enjoying the coast, and I like to write. And I snag any remote writing job I can find.
Thank you. Okay, great. Alden, you're on.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for the welcome. I don't know if you, so I do live in the South End on Lund Street. I moved here three years ago from Boston. I was a longtime Boston resident and moved here three years ago. I am retired. I have a law degree, although I didn't actively practice for a long while. I've spent most of my career in computer programming and project management. So that's essentially it. I spend a lot of time walking around the South End with my dogs and also enjoy kayaking. And I've used the new ramp at Joppa already with my kayak, so.
I'll see you on the water, Alden.
Yeah, we do a planning board unofficial, not-talking business so that we don't go over open meeting law in kayaks, so.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right. So we have the next item, says potential zoning amendments. Andy has several that he just wanted to introduce us to. But I thought because tonight is relatively early, we should dive into 6C, and that's why I prepared all that material for you to look at before tonight. You wanted some background, how we got there, and so on. So I thought we'd start with that discussion, see where we get with it. If we happen to get to some sense of consensus on what we want to do about it, we can formalize that through whatever process Andy is going to initiate with the zoning amendments. So just as background, I guess, just to tell you where all this came from. As opposed to Ann, who is the delete maven of the group, I'm the opposite. I keep everything. The problem is to find it. So I think I found everything, and I tried to cull out any overlaps. And so that's why I said the basic history is that from 84 to 2004, the planning board required findings if an applicant wanted to build more than one structure on a parcel. From 2004 until middle of 2008, and I don't remember the fact that we required a special permit without any benefits, but we did. And then after 2008, we realized that people were getting an awful lot out of this, and so we added the public benefit. I think the important thing to realize is that it was put in place because we were trying to avoid really massive two and multi-story unit buildings on one parcel. That was the real driving force, and that had to do with managing infill. Of course, we may have shot ourselves in the foot over the years, as our experience with this ordinance has resulted in, in some cases, squeezing a second unit onto a parcel, because there was a benefit that they could, the applicant could offer the city. So in recent times, and it's been ongoing since we've had the benefits, and Ann and Don, I think your two longest members on the board can attest to, it's been a struggle every time to be sure that we were equitable, we were consistent. We knew what we were talking about, and it seemed like every application we got was an opportunity for us to discuss the pros and cons of this ordinance. So it's gotten to the point with our last one was, what was that Merrimack Street one? Not this one, but the previous one that we turned down, 311. It became really clear that we may be in a different place now about this, sort of coming to some sort of consensus about what we want to do with it. And it could be either tightening up in a still manageable way that gives us but is more predictable for the applicant, the requirements or the benefits. Or we could plumb for dropping it, because several, and you see the list, it's quite a list, once I got through it, of the other ordinances that sort of take care of one or more of the benefits that this ordinance gives the city, so that we wouldn't be leaving a big gap in one of the three benefit areas of protection of open space, of providing affordable housing or historic preservation, if we were to eliminate this ordinance. And the rest of it's just discussion about with other issues that have come up over... And the rest of it's just discussion about with other issues that have come up over time in the past. So that's my summary of it. I'm ready for anyone else to kick in on background, where we are, questions for consideration. Let's just open it up.
Well, Bonnie, if I may start, first of all, you did a great job, especially the Word doc, the summary. I was really impressed. So thank you. I mean, you really succinctly put all the issues, et cetera, down. The only item that I think that we may have discussed, and I may have missed it in the three, four pages of your Word doc, is that, you know, sometimes we'll say, well, we're only one of a handful of communities that have a 6C. I think that's been discussed. In my opinion, that doesn't mean we should or should not have it. You know, I don't put much weight in that as compared to some of the other points are really good points. And I do agree with you that in 2008, and I remember I was on the board then, I was probably one of the outspoken ones that said, we are leaving, giving the developer too much. I mean, even to this day, the reason they went to 6C is there's more value. And so we said, well, if they're gonna get value, we should at least, you know, get some of that value. And that, I think, what drove us to 2008. Because even right now, they could go and without commenting whether the ZVA, whether they're linear or not, they can get dimensional variance and build a great big bass house. They don't have to go in front of us. And the reason they do is because obviously there's a real economic benefit to that. Anyway, curious to see what everyone else has to say. Thanks, Bonnie, for a great job on that.
Thanks.
Hi, just a question on that. What was the economic benefit generally that they presented? It was adjusted the increased value for the city?
Well, for them. I mean, there is some increased pro-rata tax base, one could argue for us, but that really, in my opinion, Alden, is more than outweighed by, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in a normal $700,000, $800,000 house, million-dollar house, that these things are kind of being divided. And that's, of course, taking into account the soft costs, risk-adjusted return, et cetera, whatever way you want to look at it. But and I think the reason that's the case, if that wasn't the case, they wouldn't be bothering with us. They'd probably just go to the ZVA and get a variance.
Bonnie, do you mind if I weigh in? This is Andy.
Go ahead.
Bonnie's been on the board, I think, longer than I've been here. But the time that I've been here, the things that I've seen discussed mainly with 6C, the section 6C or the ordinance we're talking about, is the preservation restrictions, that's the most recent thing that I think that there's been some debate about. And that's because before the demolition control overlay district, and this is what I think Bonnie was, might have been hitting out with the 311 Merrimack Street application, but before the demolition control overlay district was adopted to cover most of the, outside of the downtown, most of the National Register Historic District, thereby protecting a good number of structures from outright demolition. There then became some debate about, you know, to Don's point about the economic value that the developer is getting from a new structure, let's say, a whole new structure worth several hundred thousand to a million dollars, is the preservation restriction that they're offering as a quote "public benefit" sufficient? So that's one area of debate that I've heard more recently. And again, this is discussing with the board this ordinance and seeing applications. The other issue that I've seen over the years is whether or not, and again, I should add as a footnote, that we don't, I haven't seen much in the way of open space being proposed with these 6Cs. Mostly, it's been from what I think the affordable housing, the affordable housing units or the preservation restrictions, it seems to be the easiest thing for folks to do these days. And so the affordable housing component, there's been either a unit created in a few instances, but rare, or a proposal to provide some cash in lieu, which, to Don's point, usually ends up being a relatively small amount of money when you think about the economic value of an entirely new residential structure. So it depends on, you know, every application is very different. And the board has to look at both the impact of these 6C projects on a neighborhood and whether or not they're compatible with the neighborhood, which is one generic finding the board should be making. But the other one is whether or not the public benefit is sufficient to warrant, you know, granting that special permit or deserving that special permit relief from the otherwise applicable restriction on multiple residential structures. So I don't take any particular bent on this, but I, those are the things that I've seen over the years. And we're happy as an office to draft whatever language you think is appropriate. But I know that this particular issue has come back several times in the board's discussion over the years, what to do with 6C. And there's, we've never quite closed look to figure out exactly what language changes would be desired if it's not outright removal.
Thanks, Andy. That fills in a few gaps.
So one thing that I'd like to point out, my concern is being at the time, I think, maybe the newest or second newest member of the board and dealing with that 311 Merrimack, what it really pointed out to me that the public benefits that we're asking for bear no relationship to the change in land use that we're granting. I mean, the only one that actually would have a relationship would be the preservation of natural resources or open space. But as Andy pointed out, that isn't the one that's used. What's really used, it's either affordable housing or preservation restrictions. And so we're trading unrelated things. You know, we're getting a significant, sometimes a very significant change in the character of the neighborhood. And trying, I don't know how you can really say, is the benefit great enough? I guess the question is, is the benefit the right benefit? And so I was kind of pushing for changes to 6C that would relate to preserving the community character, allowing development that replicated the existing development in the neighborhood and that sort of thing. I think that the, is any point, it was pretty easy to get, to give the preservation restriction. And many cases, they're not really giving anything anyway if they're in the demolition, if they're in the overlay district. So I don't have a problem with keeping some form of 6C, but I would like to get away from this public benefit idea and have performance standards for what type of, I wouldn't even want to call them public benefits, I would want to call them performance standards for the type of development that results from the granting of a 6C.
Bonnie, can I actually add one thing at the Rick's comments there? One thing I wanted to add, the preservation restrictions, and I think you might have gathered a hint of it with comments from Glenn Richards earlier this evening, and it goes back a little bit to that 311 Merrimack Street application too. But what I have seen, and again, applicants evolve over time to see where the permit processes become easier. But one thing that I have seen is the preservation, the historic commission being approached first by an applicant to say, would you like a preservation restriction on this structure? And then, once the commission says, of course, we'd like a preservation restriction on that structure, to then come to the planning board and say, see, we've already confirmed for you that there is a public benefit involved. And I think that that decision really legally, clearly, and Rick, I'm sure can confirm this as a fellow planner, that decision rests with the planning board to decide, not the applicant, and unfortunately, not for the commission, not the commission. So the commission is really just an advisory, you know, position at that point, saying, yes, we're willing to accept the preservation restriction, but it's up to the planning board to decide whether or not that PR is a public benefit in that scenario when compared against the D-COD preservation provisions and so forth. But that's something that I've seen is, and I'd like to minimize in the future, is an applicant's ability in general to go to, from one board to another and sort of pit one board against another in a way.
Bonnie, this is Tanya. I'm curious if there's any, you know, from those of you who've been on the board, are there any 6Cs that you feel like have been particularly successful?
I immediately think of the first one, on High Street. It's, it was Ron Chompetti owned it at the time. And you can hardly tell the difference between the two. There's a driveway that separates the two buildings. There's, ah, it's side by side. There you go. And we've been talking about the idea that a good side-by-side that completes or adds to the streetscape is more preferable.
And I would be okay with an accessory structure, you know, if it's within a, let's say it's a, it was an old carriage house or a garage, and if you kept that same footprint and you put a unit in there, I think I'd be okay. But I think from my perspective, you know, I'd like to see it more, you know, I think rather than ditching 6C altogether, and not a fan of it, but I think that there's some benefits to some degree. I mean, you could, you could, you know, we don't have, we never passed the ADU zoning district, did we?
The what?
The accessory dwelling unit. Do we ever pass that?
No, it's part of the, that's part of the rewrite zoning package.
I mean, so this could be, I mean, this could be an avenue where you could do an accessory dwelling unit. So I think that there are some, sometimes when maybe it would be fine, or a side-by-side or whatnot, so that you could create more, because the more units, we need more housing units. I mean, that's just a fact. I think we don't need more luxury 4,000 square feet houses, which is what I've been seeing more or less from the 6C. So I guess it's sort of this, you know, how do we tweak the ordinance so that it benefits what we're looking for? And I, for one, I'm not against historic preservation. I think it's great. But I think there are a lot of other avenues for that. And I think it's, we've just been saying, oh, we're gonna get historic preservation restriction. And I don't know, I don't know that that's enough benefit for the economic benefits that you're getting for this, you know, for what I've seen for some of the projects that have come through. So I did like some of the, some of the feedback on, like, the side-by-side and some of the other, like, or putting it within the existing, within a building that was proposed structure that was there. You know, I almost wonder whether it should be less than 10% of the building, of the main structure's footprint or something to that regard. So I want to dig in a little bit more. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to really go through the proposed ordinance changes in too much depth before tonight.
Yeah, but that's a good point because we can, that's a straight way to ensure that you have a subsidiary and small affordable unit added. Yeah, Nine Orange Street is a good example of that. Back in 2010, reduced the existing, reduced the existing four-unit structure to a two-unit structure, renovated the existing carriage barn to be used as a single unit, and resulted in two residential structures on one lot. And that one was unique. It was a Craig Pacina, for those of you who know him as a developer, one of his projects. And he went further. He actually put a restriction into the deed on preserving internal elements in that house. Now, historical commission resists that because it's very hard to monitor. But he was adamant that the two or three elements in there that he wanted to preserve should be in the deed for the house. But that certainly is a carriage house.
If I remember that one right, though, that was an existing carriage house and an existing house, so nothing new was constructed. They were just renovated.
Okay, but you could imagine, yeah, that's true. But it's still an example, I think, of what Tanya's talking about. You could put into, if I use Rick's language, performance standards.
Right. And I think in part of those performance standards could say that if it's an existing structure, I mean, really what changed there was just the use. There was no new structure built, which is what becomes the problem.
But couldn't we also do that with a new structure?
I don't know.
Using Tanya's idea of making the requirement, the size requirement, dimensionals, quite restricted. May not get any takers, but.
I'd like to, I'd like to see that as a restriction, you know, as the size. I mean, I think that's how you're gonna win your battle.
Yeah.
It seems simple to me.
So I think there are two different things going on here. One is an accessory dwelling unit or accessory structure, which I think we still should, I hope that still goes forward in the zoning rewrite, wherever that stands. But the other thing is that if we have, if we're trying to fill in a streetscape, I mean, just think about the one we did tonight. That wouldn't necessarily have to be substantially smaller than the main house to have a benefit. It's actually, it's actually a very unique situation of creating, you know, adding to the streetscape on a different street than the main house, the primary house is located. Or if you wanted to have two houses side by side, if there were a place where that fit in, it might look odd to have one house substantially smaller than the other. So I think that we should probably, I think the substantially smaller one is an accessory dwelling unit or accessory structure or whatever. But the 6C, if we keep it, should be maybe more flexible, but less flexible in some ways, more flexible in terms of how the, of the size of the dwelling, less flexible in terms of what it does to the neighborhood, in terms of, you know, taking, eliminating open space and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying, Rick, is not necessarily that it has to be, I get that we don't have an ADU unit ordinance on the books yet. And I know we're working towards that and hopefully it passes. And it may and it may not, I don't know. But, I mean, it also could be, you know, where you could have, I just, I'm thinking more like, you know, you have a lot of these situations, I feel like in Newburyport where you have a main house, then you have that the parents lived in, and then they build a house in the back where they moved to, that's maybe bigger than an ADU unit, but smaller than maybe a 4,000 square foot apart, a house. I don't know, I'm just thinking about that. But so I guess I'm trying to figure out what's that middle ground. And I guess, I guess in some ways, the fact that we have the flexibility of deciding is, you know, with a special permit, we can, we can decide what benefits, you know, we have some flexibility there. So I guess there might be some things that we can tweak, but maybe there's some things, maybe we don't want to be too restrictive so that, because each site is really unique.
Well, maybe what we do is we have what Rick was proposing and have a set of performance criteria that is flexible. And we, there are things that we encourage or there are things that we discourage. And then it's up to us through the permitting process to decide if they need enough of the criteria either way.
No, and that makes sense.
And if I may go back, Tanya, I think your question regarding 6Cs is what we just talked about is whether it's side-by-side or back or a corner, unique, et cetera, as compared to when you asked about successive ones, I, even though there are 6Cs, I think they're markedly different than I think the angst that we all have, such as the one in Parker Street, we just did Colby Farm Road, they're 6Cs too, right? And, but I think they, they're like a different bucket, for lack of a better term, than I think the ones that we're debating.
And that actually goes back to my question when we were talking about Colby Farm Lane, the, whether that really is a 6C. You know, because it's, the language of the OSRD ordinance allows us to grant multiple structures on one lot anyway. And I think it's just been by tradition that we've also granted a 6C as part of that. But I don't think it's necessary. So I think that the...
I don't either. And I don't know when we started doing that. I'm not sure that we've always put the two together. It's just come to the fore recently. And I agree with Rick. I think the OSRD takes care of any special subdivision that's going on there and the 6C isn't required for it. I'd rather see the 6C in the light of what the other examples we've been talking about, where it literally stands on its own, and then we have to have this debate. So I'm gonna put Anne on the spot because we've struggled with this a lot. And I've watched her really have some good ideas, but not sure that she wanted to go through with it. So Anne, can you speak to this flexibility of benefits?
Um, I know.
You know what I'm referring to?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're referring to, Bonnie.
Well, I don't have a specific example, but I know that you've been, over the years, particularly discouraged when we've come to this discussion about, is this really either enough of a benefit or the right benefit? And the idea that we didn't want to make them too specific because we tie our hands, but we want to, on the other hand, if they were too flexible, we didn't know what to do about it.
Yeah. I guess we've had a lot on the historic preservation. And I remember the, the one on Merrimack Street that I didn't care for at all, which was an example of putting a house behind a house. Remember that one?
Yeah, way down, way up, up near the, on the way to the chain bridge, up that end.
Correct. And it was, you know, not in a historic district. I didn't think the building had particular architectural interest. And there was a lot of pressure, not just from the historical commission, but who's the other group? You know, Stephanie.
I mean, the Preservation Trust, the public interest group.
Yeah, and boy, they just were so strong about how important it is to keep this building. And it's like, we're not saying don't keep the building. It's just that they wanted to build that huge house behind it to be right on the river. And I just didn't like it. I don't like the house behind a house. It doesn't follow street patterns in our city. And I guess I agree with Rick. Let's not tie it to public benefit, because in the end, I don't know. I don't know that we know how to measure that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I've seen a lot more that I don't like than that I have liked. So, I don't know. I guess I would ask, why keep it? Can we think of a place where it would fit? And let's assume that we get the accessory dwelling unit zoning, which, you know, they've done a lot of good work on that.
So one question connected with that is if we do away with it, I thought in the notes it referenced some other applicable zoning things that would be applicable. Do you think, is there a thought that there are other ways to control the issues that we're talking about? Or is this something that you feel is needed?
Or put it in another way, is that list of regulations leaving anything out that we get with 6C?
Well, I sort of feel like that, you know, everything in Newburyport, every situation is so eclectic and so unusual. You know, there's no one-size-fits-all, that it is a tool. But if there were performance criteria, and one of which might be, we discourage putting a house behind a house. That would be in the con side. And if you had a pro side, it would be when two, when there is, you know, adequate space beside a house for another house. I'm being really simplistic here, but that would be a con. I feel like that gives us another tool for being able to find another unit, maybe even, and most likely a modest unit, that we might not necessarily be able to do. So I think it's a useful tool if it's, if the criteria is set up properly. And I agree with doing away with incentives that, you know, we have no idea if anybody really enjoys or appreciates, I mean, benefits.
And for those that we are okay with, the side by side, could they alternatively go to the ZBA and get, split the lot and get variances? I mean, in those situations, are there ways that they can accomplish what makes sense without 6C?
Someone can always go to the zoning board, but they have to prove that there's something unique about.
Right.
Theoretically, under the statute, which is not always the case that works out, but they have to prove that there's something unique about the property that creates a hardship for its current use. So that, theoretically, nobody.
Double bond.
Because we have to prove that the lot can be used for a certain use. But in fact, the zoning board sometimes ignores that reason. And it goes, so I guess one of the advantages of keeping a special permit is to discourage people from going to the zoning board. You know, to actually have a more formal review of the impact of the character of the neighborhood.
Well, and it also gives us an opportunity to perhaps approve something that the ZBA just can't approve.
Yeah.
Well, if I may be the devil's advocate at all, I will not be politically correct. But I think if someone took a look at the ZBA decisions, my sense, and I don't have factual information and statistics, folks, that you will find out that their definition of economic hardship is very lax, and they give it more often than not. That's just me.
Yeah.
So I think, I think to your point, Rick, if we want to control and others, if we want to control it, I do think having the 6C provides that. Because again, as you just said, right, the alternative is go through the ZBA. And Caitlin, some of you are new to the board, but about four or five years ago, and granted, you know, the makeup of boards changed, and there was a conscious effort by our city council, Bonnie, you recall this, and if I'm misstating something, please correct me, to put some things that perhaps in the past were more ZBA-related to the planning board. And one of the reasons for that is the city council back then was concerned at some of the direction the ZBA was going. You can be politically corrected, don't say anything, Bonnie.
No, no, it's true. I mean, for whatever reasons, they've cleaned up their act. We've also been pulled up too. And that's because if you take the umbrella way of handling that, it's all, each of us have our set of ordinances, and we have to be very, very conversant with the details of them when we review an application, whether it's 6C or anything else. So that's kind of like a side issue. But the thing that I think we ought to be focusing on is the idea that we shouldn't throw out the baby with the bathwater. If this tool can be used to get us something that we would want to have, and we've gotten some examples from some, several members, then we should work at making it more usable. And for the first time, we found another route besides trying to clean up our act around benefits. So it might behoove us to spend some time looking at what those criteria might be and remove the benefits, given this discussion and where we've come from on it, and test it out on each other the next time around. Everybody can make a contribution to that and see if that would move us closer to what would be a useful tool that we could actually use without tying ourselves in knots every time an applicant comes forward. The other side of it is, we also have to make sure whoever we put into it as criteria are clear enough that applicants' expectations are set, and they can propose projects without coming up with surprises when they come in to discuss it with us. And, you know, that'll only, we'll only find that out after the first one comes from the board and screams at us, oh, you didn't tell us that, or that's not the way I interpreted the criteria or the standards. But we have to be mindful of not only what works for us, but what works for the applicant. So if we're going to come up with some proposed standards or criteria, I say let's do it and review them the next time we have this discussion.
Before. Bonnie, maybe what you could do too is what you said with the proposed ordinance, we had some figures or some illustrations, maybe we could do the same thing. Besides verbiage, show, here's what we will accept, and here's what, and I'll say we'll not accept. And I know when I say we'll not, that that's a hard, that's a bright line. And that's always an issue too, because we don't say you can't do something. We do know that applicants will still come in, for whatever reason, find that loophole or do an end around, and then we'll, well, I guess we'll just have to make a decision as a board, what each of us wants to decide on.
Yeah, well, if you plow through the materials, there were, I think, 11 examples of plans that Caitlin had proposed, I had included in that documentation. So you can see what they look like, and that might spark some ideas for what you would want to include in that list of what we'd accept and what we wouldn't accept.
Actually, I'd like to just speak to that a little bit. I think it's a great idea to go to the ones that you, that we are general, and people feel are not successful, and find the issues and write somehow that into what the restrictions are, which is a little tricky. But if there are ones that really jump out at being unsuccessful, try to come up with the language that makes that not possible.
Great, great idea.
One other topic related to this. When I initially read the ordinance, it was clear to me that it was talking about adding a second dwelling unit to a lot, because it talks about one residential structure shall be subsidiary to the other residential structure. But in fact, there have been several cases where there have been more than two units on a lot. And then we have things like Hillside and Parker Street that are seven and nine, or however many units there are on one lot. I guess the question is, is a 6C, does the same procedure apply to these big developments as applies to a single development? Because I think, as we've been talking, we've been talking about fitting another house onto a lot. But in fact, we've got these other things. I think Hillside, you know, had a lot of positive things going for it. And we might have wanted to approve it for a whole bunch of reasons. And I don't know whether 6C was the right way to do it, but it was probably the only way we had to do it. And I don't know about Parker Street, that's a very unusual one. And I don't know whether that was, should have been more of an open space residential development or some other type of project. But it's not like, those two in particular are not like most of the others that are covered by this.
When you mentioned the Parker Street, is that the Hines Way?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know that there could have been a special permit for, certainly Parker Street. It would have been a subdivision, and then it would have been ugly and anything, and spread out and bad use of resources.
I mean, I think we may want to, we may want to think about whether we want to have something that allows that, but it may not be the same thing as 6C. You know, depending how we write 6C. So I guess that's the question, is as we think about how we like to have 6C rewritten, keep in mind that it has been used for those other purposes as well.
Okay, and so it might be possible to come up with criteria that relate to one, going from a single to a two-unit, and then a single to a many unit. And it could be two sets of criteria, maybe.
Yeah, or maybe.
Two different ordinances.
It could be, or it could be that we just want to have two different ordinances.
Yeah. But I think, not to overwhelm ourselves, let's at least focus on the one to two, because that's the majority of what we get, and there may not be terribly many other opportunities for the one to many. But in terms of clarifying the homework for everybody, I think it'd be the one to two, what do we want, what don't we want, with clear examples. And just scratch out one or two or however many, and send them to me, and I'll collect them up and put them out there for our next discussion.
Which will be.
Not July 1st.
You know what it's not going to be. Andy, I'm going to defer to you, because you had some other zoning amendments you wanted us to discuss at some point. And all of this is part of your request to us. So the timing on this is with you.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to touch base. I'm glad to hear what you've had to say about the 6C provision. We can obviously, we'll continue to work with you on that. Anything that, you know, makes sense to change, we can help to craft it. But obviously, the hardest thing is amongst nine members of the planning board, and then 11 members of the city council, coming to some agreement over what the changes should be. But, you know, crafting the language is something we can do. So, and this is, has, this particular ordinance has had mixed results. So it's not a clear, you know, take it out or leave it in type situation. We have to kind of figure out what makes sense. I wanted to get your sense as planning board members about any particular amendments that, whether they come out of the comprehensive rewrite that we've been working on or not, that you'd like to see move forward. Because I had talked to Council Argum, Council Shan, and the other members of the Planning and Development Committee of the City Council. There's general consensus at this point that because we're in the COVID situation with remote meetings probably for a while longer, and folks recognizing that that's sort of the new norm potentially, we'll see how things go. But there's some willingness now to move ahead with zoning amendments as opposed to the original assumption, you know, say a couple of months ago, which was that we would just kick the can down the road, wait till we get to physical meetings again, and then take that stuff up again. So similar to the two items you had earlier tonight, short-term rental units, I think, is a complex, we don't have to go into it all in detail, but complex ordinance change with multiple components and some controversy associated with it. So I can understand why that one would make sense to continue to a later date, if not a physical meeting. But I think there are some other things we could move forward on. So I had discussed with Council Argum, he's interested in potentially bringing forward the dimensional table adjustment that we'd worked on in the rewrite. Again, this is all recognizing that the, even that, all other things being equal, the bandwidth of the council and all the other parties to sort of move ahead on a zoning amendment that includes the entire ordinance is problematic right now. So trying to get through pieces of that might make more sense, and they're amenable. So what we're thinking is maybe the dimensional table, pulling that out and getting that pushed through in terms of the rewrite that we'd all worked on. The accessory zoning, discussionary unit provision that some of you had mentioned earlier tonight, might be of interest. I am particularly interested in bringing forward an amendment. Again, we'll see what the council does with it, but a provision that actually truly limits growth on Plum Island as opposed to the sort of token amendment that was adopted years ago, but that allows substantial development to continue out there. I have attended a number of meetings over the last year, and we see these just, you know, large structures being put up in place of what was there originally. And I think, you know, for me, it comes down to just one factor, which is that we can't, if we're going to be consistent with our land use policy and say that we should be retreating, or at least not encouraging development in a hazard-prone area with a fragile sewer system, then I think we should really stick to that if that's our land use policy. So that's what I'd like to see move forward, and he was interested in seeing that as well. We'll see, obviously, what the council wants to do with these things. But I wanted to get your thoughts on any particular provisions, either that are already drafted as part of the rewrite or otherwise, or, you know, 6C or other things that you think we might bring forward. It's all dependent on, you know, bandwidth and, you know, people's ability to move ahead with things. But your input is greatly appreciated.
Andy, I would really support moving ahead with the accessory dwelling units. I think a lot of good work was done on that. And, you know, I could see that benefiting a lot of people in town. So I agree, and I agree on Plum Island. We've just got to stop out there.
Thank you.
A couple of things that immediately come to mind for me. One is flood hazard overlay district and just floodplain management in general, and updating that to reflect kind of best practices in, best practices and our knowledge about sea level rise. And this is basically, sort of, Don brought up some of that stuff already earlier tonight. And I think that that is a useful thing. We're going to be fighting about that when Waterfront West comes back. And I think it'd be a good idea to start looking at that sooner rather than later. The other thing is this whole downtown overlay district parking stuff, and the ability to, I don't know where it stands right now, but the ability to claim that you're using municipal law over and over and over again. I think, I think it makes more sense to cut downtown parking requirements rather than to go through this, it's a really charade of saying, you know, that started coming up with the institution, but I think that the black cow used it, I think. And, you know, everybody is claiming the same parking space multiple times. Having a more rational parking policy for the downtown that allows businesses to grow without putting, you know, well, that's all stopped there.
好的，谢谢
I guess I would add one, Andy, as a proxy for the Energy Advisory Committee. I think you've seen their proposed for net zero buildings. They have their own opinion on it, and mine may be a little bit different. But I'll just say that the Energy Advisory Committee has asked for something they deem very important on the buildings.
Thank you, yeah, and I actually, I think one of the questions in my mind on that, because I talked with you, I talked with Molly and some others about it, was the confidence we have that we'll have a council sponsor for a net zero type provision. I don't know whether that's something that any of you have reached out to the councils on yet, or whether I. or whether I should start doing that. I just wanted to make sure we're not overlapping, so.
I'm pretty certain you, as you see, I'm almost positive, Andy, that they think that you would be taking the flag and bringing up the hill, but.
That's fine with me. It's, you know, policy direction change I believe in. Obviously, one of those things that it comes down to at the end of the day is whether the council feels that the trigger that we're using or the timeframe in which people have to comply with it is a reasonable one. So we might propose it, start in year X. You know, everybody has to comply with net zero and so forth on new units or something to that effect. The question becomes, is the council supportive of that? Or do they think it's too restrictive? Do they hear an argument from developers or, you know, those with homes that it's not reasonable? But I, I agree, it's a policy change. I think we should push for it, be a little bit progressive here in Newbury Port with respect to renewable energy.
Yeah, my, my guess is you've, you've bookended. That's maybe one of the controversial items or more debatable items. Whereas the other one that we talked before about auxiliary accessory dwelling units is kind of like Brotherhood and Apple Pie. I think most of us here agree in some degree affordability in law or whatever. So, yeah, we probably got the extremes there, Andy.
That's, that's funny that you say that, Don, because there's so many communities that are, that are not able to pass ADU units right now. So, so it's, it's, it's good to think that maybe that's a, that's one that'll, that'll go.
Well, I may be naive on second thought, Tanya. I just think it's like, well, happy to not, but, but your points felt taken, thank you.
I'm watching Salem, which is, which is my, you know, where I used to work and they're having a hell of a time getting it through their councils. So hopefully that passes there too. I will, I will just add on to Rick's that if we're going to look at parking, not just focus on downtown, but look at probably our overall parking ordinances together with sort of, you know, as, as, as sort of thinking about it holistically, especially with sharing and whatnot.
And learn from the smart growth district in terms of bicycle parking and pedestrian access and all that kind of stuff.
Right, and linkages. I, I just, I, I always go back to that, to the Hope Church and sort of the fact that they want to expand that parking lot, which is just still so crazy to me when there's so many parking lots that, that you could use in the area that, you know, and it would be for a couple hours a week that you're adding all that pavement to. So I just, I think we can, also, that's another way, like Don said, that we can be a little bit more creative and at the forefront.
I just wanted to add, I, I think Tanya was right with their earlier point she made about the fact that even though the accessory unit one, I think is a good amendment and will be beneficial from a housing perspective, affordable housing, little A affordable, if you will. I agree, I think when we get to the actual adoption of that amendment, there'll be some debate on the council floor because the, we'll hear some concern about whether or not it allows too much, you know, infill or new units.
So Andy, Andy, how do you propose to prioritize these? Because it would be much easier if we took one or two related ones at one time and just focus and get them through and then move on to the next.
Yes, well, I can definitely tell you based on what I know right now that I think that the most likely candidates for the next, you know, month or two to bring, start bringing forward to the council and having them do the hearing process with you and so forth, recognizing that, you know, we've got some other things that we have to clear off on our agenda on the, on the July first meeting at least. That if we have the accessory units, the dimensional table in Plum Island, I think that there might still need to be a little bit further work and discussion on the downtown overlay district parking special permit, the sort of expectation for that provision and the ordinance and how it's changed over time, including the more recent amendment that triggered a cash, you know, contribution for use of that public parking. But as Rick pointed out, that provision without the cash contribution has been there for years. So I think that provision, the sea level rise, you know, type flood zone type changes and the net zero component might take a little bit longer. I think that the net zero one probably is, will be difficult to get them to sort of sponsor and pay bandwidth for right now because it might be a little bit debatable and controversial. So I think those are ones I'd like to bring forward, but probably in a second round. You know, let's say the first month would be the second or third month because as you pointed out, Bonnie, there, we have to recognize the limits of people's bandwidth for meeting agendas and the procedures involved with amending the ordinance.
So where does that leave us with six C?
Well, I assume from myself anyway, I'd assume that if you could agree on what you think the substance of changes should be, and again, assuming we're all sort of generally on the same page, that we would draft that and submit it along with these, you know, these early ones, accessory zoning, dimensional table in Plum Island. Again, whether or not that's coming directly from the planning board or some council sponsor, but I guess that's up to you. It sounds like there's still some debate over what that change would be.
So is the, what is the dimensional, what is the dimensional thing? I wasn't involved, that happened, I guess, before I joined the board.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So one of the things, we were, again, with the whole comprehensive rewrite, which is a monumental project, was to sort of rewrite the entire zoning ordinance in one clean shot. And it's obviously difficult to do when you have limited resources and time. And, and then you have, every time you touch an ordinance provision, it, it triggers five other ones you have to change or look at because they're, they're referenced in some way. So we went through as part of the rewrite and the draft that's online of the rewrite that's available. We basically redid the dimensional table. And one of the things that Courtney and Community Opportunities Group helped us with was to do an analysis within sort of blocks within our districts, representative blocks, to figure out whether or not the dimensional requirements in the districts today are actually reasonably representative of those districts. Or if in fact, the dimensional requirements are so off base that perhaps they should be refined to really reflect the districts that they're in. And therefore, infill essentially would look more like the development, you know, the neighborhood that's there rather than arbitrary numbers that were sort of pulled out of the hat, you know, maybe historically. So that was kind of the attempt there with the dimensional tables to kind of bring what's, what's allowed in the districts for infill or changes, modifications, more in conformance with what the districts are. And that way, one of the, one of the assumptions with that was that, we'll see how things go. But one of the assumptions was that you might force a little, a few less folks to come in for a relief that isn't necessarily needed because what they're proposing is actually in conformance with the district. While at the same time, making sure, like I said, that any new infill or changes are actually, you know, consistent with the district because they're of similar dimensional standards. So that's what that was. And the assumption there was at least we could get that through because it, if there isn't debate over quite a lengthy table, of course, the dimensional requirements, if there isn't debate over that, at least that's a chunk we could get through. Council Argum believes that that's something that wouldn't be necessarily controversial and we could probably bring that forward. So again, if, if that's what they're able to do, let's do that one, I, I think. And I'd like to see some other ones too, if we're able to. But I recognize that, you know, Community Opportunities Group and Courtney in particular, started with the premise that we would do this all at once. And I'd love to do that as well. But what we found is that every time we work on a section, it adds more time and changes things and we go back and revisit. And it becomes hard to get everybody's bandwidth to look at the entire ordinance at once, whether it's the planning board or the city council or anybody else, all at once. And we just keep going back over some provision before the whole thing is finished. So we're thinking that maybe we can at least get some big chunks done and then, you know, pull in the smaller pieces after that if need be.
So my, my feeling is, and I might be wrong about this, but it usually is the case that most of the issues with the dimensional table have to do with the residential neighborhoods and particularly the older residential neighborhoods. Because those are the areas that were zoned after they were already developed. So it seems to make a lot of sense to look at the dimensional, if that's the case. It seems to make a lot of sense to look at the dimensional table, the accessory dwelling units and six C together as a housing package or residential development package. And then you, then you make sure they all fit together. And that could go pretty quickly, I would think. Am I, am I wrong about that?
I, I don't disagree, but I think, again, this is all, you're a planner as well and you've seen the pros and cons of approaching things different ways over the years. But my, my sense is that it will be easier for us if we parse out, rather than packaging them together in one amendment, let's say. Even if they, even if they go in simultaneously, maybe that's what you meant by packaged. They're technically, they're separate amendments. That way, should the council get hung up over debating six C a little longer and the dimensional tables all set, otherwise we could move that one forward. So perhaps you're, we're on the same page about that.
Yep.
Okay, given that concept of moving forward with those three plus the limiting of growth on Plum Island, we still have to discuss among ourselves in more depth six C. So not knowing what's going to happen with the institution application, I could put the discussion on for July 15th with the option that if we have a long drawn out discussion about the institution, anything's up for grabs. But I'd like to have a date to shoot for so that I can have something to remind you of as the time is approaching to get that input. So let's plan for another discussion on six C on July 15th. If that's okay.
We'll add that to the agenda.
Yeah, just like here, under other business. And Andy, if you want, if we turn out to have an abundance of time, you could add an intro, you know, actually having us preliminarily before it's put before us in a joint public hearing, the accessory dwelling unit and the dimensional table.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you.
Is the current draft of the accessory dwelling unit online?
Yep, if you have trouble locating it, let me know. But there's, if you look at the city's website, we, we're making an adjustment because of the Engage Newbury Report website that we were using. We've decided to migrate away from that. I can go into that in more detail, but bottom line is we're migrating stuff back to the city website. So it's, it's there. But if you have any trouble reviewing it as part of the rewrite package, let me know. We would essentially just parse that piece out, you know, for now.
Andy, would that be the same for the dimensional control?
Yes, same, same thing, yep.
Okay, we're, just, just so maybe we don't have to overwrite it even. We're, I've, I've got the city Newbury Board on and I've got the planning department. Where exactly is it?
Yeah, actually, let me just.
Or flip it all to all of us?
Yeah, actually, one, one second, let me just try to.
Why don't you just send us the link and work on it afterward or have Caitlin do it?
Yep, will do. This, this is the Engage Newbury Report URL or website. But I'll, I'll send the link to you, which basically just is, right now it's embedded here. We've called it Port City Plans, but it's got a, if you click on that, it's just, it's the main page there. It's got a whole list of the sections there. But I can, I'll send you the link to that.
Thank you. Okay, there was one other item that, Andy, you wanted to get a letter from us regarding the open space plan because the city is coming up against a deadline, but it says nothing about our supporting it or not and that you wanted us to vote on that tonight.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize for the sort of last minute discussion of this. But what's happened here is, to make a long story short, is the city is obligated, it's not obligated under statute, but to be eligible for some grant programs and for good planning purposes, we are required to update our open space plan every five years. There's been a little bit of variation in that timeframe from the state. They varied, you know, at a point to seven years, they could extend them. But bottom line is every five years or so, we have to update our recreation open space plan. The last one was updated in 2012. We're updating it right now with a small allocation of funds that came from the Community Preservation Committee. We've hired Beta Group Incorporated to help us update that plan. Jordy Vining, Lee's Reed and myself have been working with a consultant to go through the sections, to go through the public participation process and the public feedback. The, I would acknowledge right here that the public participation process has been crunched tight on this particular plan update because it's our understanding the state is not, is not flexible right now with the deadline to submit the draft plan despite the COVID situation. And unfortunately, the, the planning or the project itself did not get kicked off early enough. In my opinion, I wanted it started earlier last year, but it got started a little bit too late. And so what we have now is the need to get at least a comment letter in from the planning board before the end of this month, if possible. That's my request. And normally, I would want to have submitted something like this to you several months ago and said, we have a draft plan, you know, like the master plan, please take a look. Let us know your thoughts, we'll revise the plan, you know, then we'll get a letter from you and so forth. Because of the timeframe, what we're asking for is not a letter of support or approval of the plan itself, but rather a letter, I would ask tonight essentially for the board to authorize the chair or myself or another member, if you prefer, to sign a letter indicating that the board is in receipt of the draft plan. This is the draft plan that's on the website and, and is reviewing it and will provide further comments in the coming weeks, obviously. We expect you to comment on it entirely tonight. I know Rick had put together some pretty thorough comments and we have those. I have them now if you wanted to go through them, but, but we have those comments. If, our goal here is basically to meet the state deadline for submission of the plan by the end of the month. So we're not jeopardizing our ability to apply for the next grant round because the Parks Department was planning on applying for the grant. Unfortunately, Jordy wasn't able to kick off this project early enough where we could back up the public participation process to be longer. So we've shortened that process unfortunately and it kind of coincided with the COVID situation. So with that sort of background, I guess, I'm hoping that you'll be willing to authorize the chair and myself to sign a letter that essentially acknowledges the board has received the plan. Perhaps if you wish, can incorporate or reference Rick Taintor's comments as initial, you know, adjustments that could be made in the draft plan before adoption and that you'll provide further comments in the coming weeks. Our, our goal is to circle back with you as the planning board and the city council in the coming weeks when a updated final draft version of the plan is ready for a full review process that we would have with the city council. But we're just, our, like I said, our timeframe is a bit compressed.
I would make a motion that Bonnie could send a letter to that effect.
Thank you.
Second?
Second, I'll second.
All right, Don, you get to second it. And I have to take a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ? MJ, you still with us? All right, Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, you got your letter authorization. I'll sign it whenever you get it to me and that's taken care of for now.
Thanks very much.
Anything else from the department?
No, I don't think not at this time. You know, if there's anything else that you folks would like information on, let me know. The, there isn't anything on the Planning and Development Committee meeting this week that this planning board would need to pay attention to. So I think there's nothing else worthy of note at this time.
Anybody else have any, anything to bring up?
Just a question. I was looking at the planning development meeting notice and it had, of course, the subcommittee discussion of Waterfront West, which I know is not happening. But do we know anything about what's, when we're going to get back to that?
Certainly, nothing has been coming from NED. The last conversation I had had, and this is really as COVID kind of took over everybody's attention and bandwidth for dealing with adaptive, you know, ways of doing things. With the last we had spoken, we were talking about putting together an estimate for our own 3D model to look at the Waterfront West area and to basically use that as a tool, sort of in concert with your planning board joint meeting or discussion with the Planning and Development Committee of the city council to agree on what the substance of changes should be to the existing Waterfront West overlay district. The assumption was that the model would help us to visualize, at least in block form, where the massing was reasonable to have a one-story, two-story, three-story, four-story, et cetera, height building rather than relying upon any model that might be given to us by NED or not given to us by NED, so that we can visualize that for ourselves and come to some consensus internally. Because somewhat what I was saying earlier on this evening, when we have, never mind the general public's feedback, when we have nine planning board members and 11 city councillors to agree on a zoning change for Waterfront West, something that's, you know, a very important area of the city, will have long-term impacts, you know, prior con and has lots of community interest in it. It becomes hard to get 20 people to agree on what that content should be. So I guess our hope was that we'd be able to continue and pick up with that discussion. I know that Heather and the Planning Development Committee members and others have been needing to focus on some other things, obviously, with the rest of the council. But I think we could discuss with Heather whether or not we pick up that discussion again and whether or not they devote some time in their regular meetings or otherwise to sort of pick up what we have.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Alden? Okay. And the last roll call of the night. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yeah.
Anne?
Absolutely.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Definitely.
Don?
Unequivocally.
Bonnie, yes, thank you. This was, this was an easy one. Welcome again, Alden and. Welcome again, Alden. And I don't know, whatever, whatever I say is probably inappropriate. So I won't say anything about preparing for the next meeting. So see you then, if not sooner. Some of us will see each other on the site visit and have a good two or three weeks, whatever it is till then.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Bye-bye.